You know, all I want to know is you set me up. Because when I came in here to put my heater on, it wasn't in my cubby, it was in your cubby. They set me up. No, they set me up.
You're watching Cable 2.
Good evening and welcome to our Board of Education meeting on January 14th, 2025. I'd like to please call the meeting to order and join us in standing for a pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence with Board Member Miller.
..................................................................................................................................................................................................................
Okay, I'd like to start with a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Yes.
Superintendent?
Yes.
May I make a motion to amend the agenda?
Yes.
To have the superintendent's update after the discussion but before the action items?
Yes.
May I make a motion for that?
Yes.
Second.
All in favor to amend the agenda? Any opposed? Okay, so we have amended the agenda to include the superintendent update at the end of the discussion items before the action items. Thank you. All right. Tonight is an organization meeting, which is why I started the meeting, everyone. And as you can tell, I'm just now pulling up my notes to do this. If you're wondering, why is she delaying a little bit? That is exactly why. So we're going to get started. Pursuant to the Board of Education bylaws, the first meeting in December is the organizational meeting, and that is where the Board of Education selects their new chair and vice chair. And as everyone knows, on December 10th, we did not move forward with that as we had our incident at Reynolds happen that evening, and we went through a very quick abbreviated agenda that night. So I will preside over the meeting until our chair is elected and our vice, and then I'll turn it over to whoever the chair is to move forward with the election of the vice chair. So basically, we will get faith, we will move on with that.
Are you ready for nominations?
So I am now going to open the floor. I am now, yes, sorry. I had this on December 10th, and I don't know where it is. Can you imagine? So now I've got it in my notes, so I've got it right here. So now, so now I'm going to, let me read what's going to actually happen here. I'm going to open the floor to nominations for the chair first. After I close the floor to nominations, I will call for a vote on the nominations for the chairperson in the order in which they were received. If there is a majority vote, that person will be elected chair. If there is not a majority vote, I will call for a vote on the others nominated as chair, and so on, until there is a majority vote to elect the chairperson. All right? And then we will do the same thing for the vice chair. And luckily, I will turn that process over to the chair that has been elected. So now I'm going to open the floor to the board members who wish to nominate a board chair. Okay? I think I saw Richard Tan first, so who was your nomination?
I would nominate Deanna Kaplan as our board chair.
I'll second it.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to nominate Deanna Kaplan for board chair. Are there any other nominations? Do I have to vote? I keep going on any other, then vote. Any other nominations for chair? All right? With no other nominations, then we will vote on Board Member Kaplan. So all in favor of Board Member Kaplan for chair, please raise your hand. That is unanimous. Thank you. So I will now turn the script over to Chair Kaplan. Do you know it, or do you want my notes?
Can I have your phone?
We've done this four years now, and I can't remember. We're down here now.
Thank you, and it's quite an honor to be your chair again this year. I really, really am honored, and I appreciate it, and I will try my best to do a good job. Thank you. So now, at this point, we are going to do the election for the vice chair. Ooh. Are you ready for a nomination, Madam Chair? I would like to nominate Board Member Crowley.
I'd like to nominate Alex Bohannon.
Okay. Do we have any other nominations? So we have a nomination for Board Member Crowley, we have a nomination for Board Member Bohannon. Any discussion? Okay. Peering none.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Do, can you accept a second for that nomination?
It's not required.
It's not required, but it is allowed.
It is allowed, yes.
Can I second the nomination?
Yes.
Please. Thank you, Madam Chair. I second the nomination for Leah Crowley as the vice chair, and I do that for several reasons. The first reason is she deserves it, number one. She's had four kids go through the system, and I think that's fantastic, as far as I'm concerned. Four kids graduated the system, she's been a great volunteer over the years, she's been a school board member now, she's in her second term. She won her first election by the skin of her teeth, if I may say, by just a handful of votes. But she hung in there and ran a second time, she was the top vote getter, so I think that's commendable. She's in her second term now, and maybe, or maybe not, her last, that's up to her. But in addition to these plaudits, our board elected on a partisan basis. Our partisan divide is five to four. You can't get much closer than that unless it would be the other way around. It's not going to be the other way around, for a while at least, looks like. Can't get any closer than that. I feel like, as a member of the minority party, that it, I know that the State House in Raleigh, at the US House in DC, at the committee level, and at the House level and Senate level, parliamentary protocol allows for a minority party to have a vice chair or to be a ranking member. We don't have that in our current policy, but I think in lieu of that, I think it would be a great demonstration on the part of this board. If we would elect Leah Crowley as our vice chair, and I think that would be a great demonstration on the part of the board of comity and equity, as far as the board is concerned. So I hope that my colleagues on the left and colleagues on the right will join me in voting for Leah Crowley for vice chair.
If we're, if we're going to make pleas for why and what should be going on, it makes me very sad that we're even discussing politics when it comes to our chair and vice chair. Our vice chair, Alex Bohannon, has been integral. He works hard, he works almost harder than everybody on this board. He is well-versed in operational and other matters that I think lends his voice to many things. And if it's not broke, don't fix it.
Any other discussions, comments? Okay, so we have two in nomination. We have Board Member Leah Crowley, and we have Board Member Alex Bohannon. All in favor of Board Member Leah Crowley, please raise your hand. Okay, four opposed. Okay, motion fails. All in favor of Alex Bohannon, raise your hand. Okay, those opposed. Okay, four. Motion carries for Alex Bohannon to be our vice chair. Congratulations. So we are now on our special recognitions. First, Alexis McCoy, the Assistant Director of Athletics, will recognize and thank the Winston-Salem Open donation for middle school athletics. We don't have that.
Chair Kaplan, Ms. McManus, members of the board, thank you for allowing us to come up here today. My name is Alexis McCoy, and I'm the Assistant Athletic Director for the county. I'm here tonight to introduce Mr. Jeff Ryan from the Winston-Salem Open. Mr. Ryan is here to present our middle school athletics with a donation. These donations have been used to help our Title I schools and help support our school tournaments, such as our tennis tournament in the spring, which is held at Haynes Park. We really appreciate their contribution and continued support throughout the years.
Thank you for this opportunity. It's a real pleasure for me to be here. This is now going to be my fifth year in this role as the Tournament Director for the Winston-Salem Open. For those of you who may not know, that is a professional tennis tournament, which takes place annually in August every year, and it's organized by an entity known as Winston-Salem Professional Tennis, which is a 501(c) organization. A main goal for us every year is to throw off a net excess, as we say in our business, others refer to that as profit, but really, at the end of the day, that's our main goal. And at the end of the day, too, we also very much want to benefit Winston-Salem Forsyth County Middle School athletic programs, with the hope that the Title I schools will also be able to benefit, in particular, I guess I would say. We're very proud of this. Since I got here, this now brings our total over $100,000 of monies that we've been able to bring forth. If it's up to me, we're going to keep doing it, and we're going to keep doing it in a bigger and better way. So again, thank you for this opportunity. Thank you to the community that supports us. Hopefully, this shows our support for our community, and we look forward to many more years. Thank you.
Forsyth County Schools Outstanding Elementary Mathematics Teacher, Kristy Franklin from Ward Elementary School.
Good evening. Yes, absolutely. Come on over. Now, I have to gush and talk about you just a bit, okay? Good evening, Board Chair Kaplan, Vice Chair Bohannon, members of the board, Superintendent McManus, we have a rock star among us. And each year, the North Carolina Council of the Teachers of Mathematics and the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction honor math teachers across our state who exemplify excellence in teaching by fostering enthusiasm for math through engaging classroom experiences, hashtag deeper learning at its best. Each year, an outstanding mathematics teacher is recognized for each school district, with the award alternating annually between elementary and secondary levels. This year, we are proud to announce that Winston-Salem Forsyth County's Elementary Mathematics Teacher of the Year is Ms. Kristy Franklin. A dedicated fifth-grade math teacher at Ward Elementary School. Ms. Franklin was celebrated alongside her other distinguished elementary mathematics teachers during the North Carolina Council for the Teacher of Mathematics Awards Ceremony on November 14th at the Benton Convention Center. She received a personalized award, and her name was featured in our Fall 2024 issue of the Council of Mathematics Teachers Journal, the Centroid, as well as on their website. Ms. Franklin's teaching is marked by her ability to integrate meaningful manipulatives, engage students in real-world experiences to make math relevant, emphasize problem-solving, and guide her students to embrace mistakes as valuable learning opportunities, which is a part of our Standards for Mathematical Teaching Practices, practice number one, to make sense of problems and persevere in solving them. With over 16 years of teaching and her career all at Ward, is that correct? Amazing. One year at Atkins, but 16 years at Ward. She deeply values helping her students grow. Her efforts have resulted in students being motivated, confident, and excited about math, fostering their belief that they too can achieve success in math. So please join me in honoring and being excited with Kristy as one of our amazing phenomenal teachers in Winston-Salem Forsyth County, the North Carolina Teacher for Mathematics. Take a bow. Please definitely shake the hands of our peers. And I want to say firsthand, I have seen Ms. Franklin in lots of professional developments, and her enthusiasm is absolutely infectious. And I want to ask her principal and any colleagues to please stand and be recognized just for your continued support of her. We know every great teacher needs great support. And her family, is her family here? Yes, family. And I believe if I'm remembering correct, her daughter was a Miss America, is that correct? See? Gosh, see? Awesome. Phenomenal family. Congratulations, Kristy, and thank you for all you do for Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools.
What a good-looking family. Yes.
My daughter's a teacher.
Next, Laura Holland, our Senior Executive Director for Exceptional Children's Services, will recognize the Outstanding ED Teacher of Excellence Award, Kristy McDougall from Cash Elementary School.
Each year, the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction recognizes a special education teacher as the Teacher of Excellence from every district across the state. The Winston-Salem teacher who received this award this year is Kristy McDougall, who is one of our teachers at Cash Elementary School. From the moment that Ms. McDougall arrived at Cash Elementary School, she has demonstrated the ability to create inclusive classrooms and inclusive environment, an engaging learning environment for all of her students. She embodies the image of a special education teacher that we want in Winston-Salem Forsyth County schools. She attends to her students' unique learning needs, individualizes lessons for each one of them, makes each student feel valued, respected, and a genuine part of the school environment. Not only has her teaching been outstanding at Cash Elementary School, but she has improved her students' performance, their personal growth, and their lives in general at this school. So please join me in congratulating Kristy as being named one of NCDPI's Outstanding Special Education Teachers for this school year. And I believe we have Jennifer Swafford, her principal, here, and are those family members?
Yes, of Ms. Swafford's. Yes.
Okay. And Ms. Swafford's family members. Okay, thank you.
As she's walking down, I just want to say that as someone that's been in her classroom, this is a teacher that every parent would want their child in her classroom, everyone. So congratulate, I just was saying that I would want my own child, and everybody would want their children in your classroom. Thank you.
And now Laura Holland will also recognize the National Special Education Day.
So there'll be a little more to come with this in a moment, but we are recognizing National Special Education Day, which was actually in December, and we pushed it back to this meeting. This is observed every year on December 2nd to commemorate the signing of the National Special Education Law, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. And Board Chair, I believe you, do you have something, do you want to introduce the spotlight video?
Yes, can I go right into that? Yes, please go ahead. Yes, so as you had just said last month, well, due to unforeseen circumstances, our board meeting was abbreviated, and we were unable to present everything that we had planned. And one very special thing we wanted to share was our recognition of National Special Education Day in the form of video and an extraordinary new reporter, and her name is Lindy Southern, and tonight she wants to share with us the history of National Special Education Day and offer her own personal thoughts. And is Lindy in the audience? And her family? And also her family, if you could stand up. And I want to recognize your family, too. If you could stand up or raise your hand. So now, let's enjoy the board spotlight video.
Hi, my name's Lindy Southern. I'm in 11th grade at Mount Tabor High School, and today I'm going to be talking about National Special Education Day and the history of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. Forty-nine years ago, on November 29th, 1975, the first federal law addressing the education of children with disabilities became a reality. Special Education Day is celebrated each year on December 2nd to commemorate the signing of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act into law in 1975. IDEA provides access to disabled children to have a free, appropriate public education, also known as FAP. The Act, Public Law 94142, was originally known as the Education for All Handicapped Children Act, or EAHCA. The Education for All Handicapped Children Act was signed by President Gerald Ford on November 29th, 1975. Before 1975, there was not a legal requirement for disabled children to attend school. In 1970, approximately one in five children with disabilities were educated in public schools in the United States. Many states actually had laws that prevented school attendance for students who were deaf or blind, as well as students who had emotional or intellectual disabilities. Many of these children were placed in state institutions to remain for the rest of their lives. After the Act was signed in 1975, states that accepted the federal funds were required to provide full educational access to children with disabilities. And in 1990, the name of the law was changed to the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, or IDEA. Over the years, there have been different points added to address issues and to ensure that the standards of education for disabled children are equitable when compared with the educational standards for all children. However, the essential focus remains the same, and it is the foundation for special education in the US. Today, we celebrate the passing of this law in 1975 and ask that we refocus and strengthen our commitment to providing appropriate educational opportunities for all children with disabilities. To close out, I would like to leave you with some thoughts and my own experiences. First, please do not skip out on the law, it's all there for a reason. Secondly, don't push us into this unrealistic mode of being non-disabled, but also keep the expectations as high as possible. Next, get to know the student beyond the IEP, such as their hobbies or interests, when more than a piece of paper, no matter how helpful that piece of paper is. Next, collaborate with the parents and the IEP team when determining what works and doesn't, because they can provide helpful input. And finally, understand that there can be a lot of things we're able to do with accommodations, but there are just some things that we simply cannot do, even with all the accommodations in the world, and that's okay. And this also depends on the student and the stability of the disability. And finally, just understand that society can be challenging when it's not made for you, as can school, and it can be exhausting.
Dr. Holland, while you guys are coming down, I do know that Lindy's parents are here, and I know that she has a support, a fan club at the back with the Mount Tabor admin and other staff members. Will all of you that are here supporting Lindy, please just stand really quickly. Yay. Yay. So I've gotten to know Lindy, as she is a star feature on the Mount Tabor morning, you're a star feature on the morning show at Mount Tabor. That's where I've seen you many times, and you do a great segment. So if you haven't seen that weekly morning show, you've got to see it. It's amazing. So thank you.
That was amazing. At this time, we are going to hear public comments on the agenda items only. If you've signed up to speak, we ask that you sit near the aisle seats, close to the podium. We expect civility, please be kind, considerate, respectful. Direct your comments only to me as board chair and not to anyone in the audience. No, we cannot talk about sensitive and private student or personnel information in this public setting. Please know that each public comment is heard, there's a follow-up process to address your questions and concerns. And in the interest of time, because we are trying to conclude this meeting at least before nine o'clock, so that everyone can leave safely and avoid icy roads, I'm going to limit the time to two minutes a person, because we have quite a few. So our first speaker is LaJoy Wilson-Moore.
I'm LaJoy Wilson-Moore, the proud principal of the Virtual Academy, where transforming learning for growth is our theme, hence the mask. I am here along with some friends to, one, appeal against the recent proposal to close our school, and, two, to set a stage for a parade of positivity to potentially sway your opinion about what doesn't appear to be a foregone conclusion around our school's closing. We are here to ask that you keep the Virtual Academy open and its structure intact. I came to this position only a few months ago following a leave of absence, which prevented me from returning to the schoolhouse. Variations of this same situation account for many of our Virtual Academy staff and students. We provide the best alternative for staff who are between medical leads for physical and mental health and provide safe spaces for all students who are between hospital homebound and their residential schools. For many who have experienced bullying and for those who need tailored interventions, we provide virtually synchronous learning on par with what others receive in the building. That means we have the same curriculum and schedule with teacher-led instruction as other schools. This is much different than the asynchronous learning that took place during the COVID-19 pandemic. During my short tenure of four months, we've developed our student council and created student activities each month where we meet in person to provide a more hybrid experience for the sake of building community and culture for our families. This is also unique for virtual spaces and is a part of our priorities to address some of the isolation and mental health concerns that may accompany many other virtual schools across the state. If addressing our school system's finances is the primary reason, please consider another alternative. As a part of my principal's priorities, we were making attempts to increase enrollment. However, the district reduced staff allotments of upwards of about 15 staff members, but we have about 64 folks on the waitlist. However, we're at capacity based on the number of staff who remain. We were targeting our district's homeschool population. Could we consider this a more viable option for reconciling our budgets? We could potentially restore millions of dollars by recouping for South County students lost to homeschooling by offering a program like ours with the right campaign.
Thank you. Okay. Ann Proctor.
Good evening. I am Ann Proctor, and as the Assistant Principal of Instruction, I would like to speak to how our current structure as the Virtual Academy, grades three through eight, continues to strive for transforming our learning for growth for both our students and our staff. Our staff meets weekly to converse about standards, instructional practices for successful online learning, data analysis, and goal-setting to meet our students' academic, emotional, and social needs. As noted in the Panorama survey, 83% of our staff responded favorably to new initiatives presented and supported by our staff. Our district initiatives of coaching and feedback, structured PLTs, and routine walkthroughs are directly related to the success by our students. One such example is the fifth-grade achievement data from the 2023-2024 school year. Our fifth-grade math met expected growth with a growth index of 1.56. Our fifth-grade reading exceeded expected growth with a growth index of 2.6, excuse me, 2.06. And our fifth-grade science met expected growth with a growth index of 1.26. Yes, our learning environment is structured differently, but our positive impact it has on our district's students and their parents and guardians to attend school and learn durable skills, due to the individual concerns of homelessness, illness, learning disabilities, physical disabilities, mental illness, is an environment that should not be altered. In closing, the Virtual Academy, as it is, grades three through eight, would continue to have holistic success due to our instructional practices, as our staff will collectively, under one school vision and leadership, be able to implement district initiatives for the success of our students to ensure that we have flexible and focused learning each and every day. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. I apologize if I mispronounced this name. It's a student, Anuk Bonart.
Hi, my name is Anuk. I'm in 7th grade at the Virtual Academy since five years. At first, I was at Brunson Elementary. The Virtual Academy gave me things I couldn't find in brick and mortar, such as safety and not worrying about bullying, but also an upgrade in my grades because of the, like, you could focus only on your work and not what was around you. And I think it's important to leave an alternative for students and families to brick and mortar. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming to speak. Alan Daniel.
Don't y'all sit down? I have some questions about the decision to close Virtual Academy. One of the statements is that it would save the district $950,000. I believe that the district owes it to the stakeholders to tell us exactly, specifically, how that money would be saved. Are we going to let some of these people go? That's the only way you're going to save $950,000. Because if they go to another job in the district, you're still going to pay that money. Okay, if y'all want to sit down, you can now, but I got some other questions. The future ready, I would like to address that. In the slides, there will be a slide that talks about the exclusionary discipline and how that has gone down. I said this, and you all have heard it ad nauseam, with the code of conduct. Just because you reduce exclusionary discipline does not mean you have improved behavior. It could very well mean you have ignored behavior and it has gotten worse. It has been stated that all students do better in an inclusionary system, and it can be done without additional manpower or dollars. If one has ever been in a classroom that erupted while a student has a moment, you understand the fallacy of that thought. And finally, a lot of questions have been on the internet about why we aren't remote. One of the things that I've heard from numerous sources is that it is funding. Tonight, you're going to be asked to spend $225,000 on a stadium. I don't have time to do all the math, but if we don't spend that $225,000 on the stadium and we spend it on paper to provide packets for remote learning, that would provide 460 sheets of paper for 52,000 students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Daniel. Jackson, I'm sorry for the mispronunciation. It's Fod, Foddy?
Foddy.
Foddy, thank you.
So my son has been a student in Virtual Academy for a year and a half now. He's been an EC student since he's been part of the school system as a kindergartner. And first and foremost, I'd like to thank the staff, faculty, and Virtual Academy. They've been absolutely fabulous from day one, helping him integrate into the system. And I think probably one of my main questions really would be as to the study of the efficacy of transferring students from a virtual program to an in-school program and understanding the difficulties that be involved with that. And again, as a student or parent of a student who's a non-traditional learner, I think it's really given them the time to keep away from a lot of the distractions in the classroom, more so than anything else. And I just would really like the board to take that into consideration and that, you know, the parents really do care about this program. And if it's about money, then maybe we can work for outside donations, beneficiaries, et cetera. I don't think that should be an option that's left off the table as well. But I would like to be heard and be sure that everyone else from the staff and faculty is heard as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. and Mrs. Callenger.
I'll go ahead and get started. We're both parents of students in the local system, and we grew up here. So we know, we've seen things change over the years, but we came back to Winston-Salem to raise a family because it does offer something for everyone. And even though we never thought that we would, you know, end up in quite this situation, we enrolled our children in the virtual learning during the pandemic because everything was crazy. And it was definitely a leap of faith. We didn't know how it would work, and to our delight, the children thrived. So they did so well at Virtual Academy, even though everything was in upheaval. They, it really is a reassuring and uplifting and inclusive community, and that's a middle school. And that, I mean, think about that. That's like the antidote to every middle school horror story you've ever heard. They have a very diverse population of families. Everybody has a reason for being there, but there is a wide span of reasons, and they all kind of come together and support each other. And we've made sense the transition to virtual high school, and that's been harder. It's more complicated to navigate because that's hosted as an add-on at a school that already has a mission. JFK is all about hands-on CTE. So adding the virtual program there, it's a funny mix. And I can appreciate why maybe JFK isn't eager to host the virtual program forever, but I'm not really sure why you would want to move them to Winston-Salem Prep. I know that the material said, you know, your slides, that it's to boost enrollment at Prep, but I'm not really sure why is enrollment down there? Because Virtual Academy has had a waiting list. They're not having any trouble with enrollment. And that's because there's many, many families throughout our district who, they need what this school offers that no one else does. And moving it, uprooting it to a mixed model, it's a mistake. You'll lose what makes it special. You'll lose what makes it so great, and it's something you won't get back. Sorry that you told your time.
Can I get a fresh 120? I can do it in 60 if that helps.
Are your children Otto and Timmy here?
They are.
Okay, so I'd like for them to come speak, too. Thank you.
Okay, does that mean I'm done? Or do I have, do I have two minutes?
I'm sorry, baby.
You were as a couple.
All right. Nice to meet you all.
Nice to meet you.
Is there a microphone you have to turn on?
You just talk.
Okay, okay, it's not like there was one. Okay, so, yeah, there is, there's definitely a very strong community and reassuring, like, everybody's there for each other. I think you can see tonight. Okay, sorry. I think you can, I was saying, I think you can see tonight, there's a lot of community. And I have some, like, concrete examples. There's a, what's it called, petition that went up, I think, less than 24 hours ago, and it has 400 signatures, and there were some testimonies on there, like, to virtual experience, which I thought were worth going over. Somebody said about their son has autism and went there. There was mention of bullying and getting away from bullying in the virtual environment, having more friends and more of a voice. So the atmosphere is definitely better for some kids and gives good opportunities. And also, I have this, it's a little bit messy, but the Winston-Salem Prep scores are lower than the VA on pretty much everything. So the math and reading proficiency are lower, the enrollment is lower, also lower than JFK. So it's a downgrade, and it's going to make, for the Virtual Academy, it's going to make the Virtual Academy look worse, like it's performing worse and worse if it's moved to Prep. So I feel like it's kind of sidelining it the way that the student would do. I want to give you time, silly.
I remember how difficult it was for my family to have to choose between an education that would provide me and my brother with meaningful, lasting relationships and one that would keep our vulnerable family member safe. Luckily, they didn't have to choose. VA gave us connections with other students and teachers who understood our unique circumstances. I met kids with sick parents like me, kids with baby siblings, kids who'd been shot. Closing Virtual Academy would cost students more than educational displacement and educators more than their jobs.
Thank you so much for coming to speak. Sarge Bandarat.
I'm a happy and appreciative parent of the VA. We were forced into this by the pandemic, of course, but since then, it has been choice. And every day, we are happy with that. And I, well, I have a very mixed feeling about anybody being able to cancel a school just based on cost saving. And any parents should not be forced to compromise his kid's education, safety, well-being over cost-saving. And the Virtual Academy is a real school. There's real kids, real family, and this is not, this is not something you should, you should be able to erase like you plan to. So I would appreciate you to reconsiderate your recommendation and keep that amazing program alive. And I think the community deserved that choice, and it makes a lot of kids happy and thriving. And this is not just, there is nothing virtual about the Virtual Academy. It's, it's part of the community. Thank you.
I apologize, I'm just.
Radulovic.
Okay, thank you very much.
Superintendent, members of the board, peeps. I'm Tom Radulovic. My education name is Mr. R. I'm just going to read briefly the petition that was mentioned earlier. We have over 400 signatures, and that was just released today. And then I'm going to finish with a quick comment. We, the undersigned members of Winston and for South County Schools Virtual Academy, strongly oppose the recommendation to dissolve the Virtual Academy and urge the board to reject this proposal. The Virtual Academy has been an integral part of our educational system for five years, serving as a virtual alternative for families who require flexible academic solutions. The program isn't just an option, it is necessary for many of our students who thrive in a virtual environment. What I'm asking the board to do is look at the agenda, look at the bullet points, and question each bullet point deeply. In my opinion, they don't hold water, but it's up to you to ask deep questions. The other thing I want you all to know is if this proposal goes through, yes, there may be virtual learning at Cook, there may be virtual learning at Winston-Salem Prep, but it will not be the Virtual Academy. I'm an OG, along with many others. We spent five years getting this school to where it is now. We worked hard to get our school number, and I think it should be equally hard, if not harder, to take away that school number. Thank you.
Jennifer Chambers.
Good evening, fellow board members and community leaders. My name is Jennifer Chambers, and I stand before you today as a parent and a teacher and someone whose life was fundamentally changed by classroom violence. The proposed closure of the Virtual Academy and merger with Winston-Salem Prep and Cook strikes at the heart of what makes our school community special and successful. As a mother of two children at the Virtual Academy and have been for five years, including one who is autistic with a learning disability, I've witnessed firsthand how this environment has helped them flourish. Our dedicated teachers have built meaningful relationships with their students, understanding their unique needs and challenges. The Virtual Academy isn't just a school, it's a community where students feel safe, understood, and supported. understood and supported by peers who share similar needs for a protective learning environment. From an educator's perspective, while virtual teaching presents its own challenges, the Virtual Academy has become an extraordinary place to teach. Over the past five years, our staff has grown into a strong family, creating a cohesive team that works tirelessly to provide the best possible education for our students. This proposed merger threatens to dismantle what we've spent years building. My commitment to virtual education comes from a deeply personal place. In February of 2020, I suffered a devastating assault by a student that left me with ruptured disc requiring emergency surgery to fuse disc in my neck from my C4 to my C7. This injury, which still causes significant pain and has resulted in a 30% disability rating, made it impossible for me to return to a traditional classroom. The Virtual Academy became a lifeline, allowing me to continue my 20-year passion for teaching middle school. Recent medical evaluations show further complications requiring an additional surgery in the next month, making it a return to in-person teaching not just something that can't happen, but won't happen. Closing the Virtual Academy isn't just about changing locations or merging schools. It's about dismantling a safe haven for vulnerable students and dedicated staff. For some of us, including myself, this closure would end our teaching careers entirely. I implore you to reconsider this decision and preserve the unique supportive environment we have created at the Virtual Academy. Thank you.
Jen McGarvey?
Good evening. My name is Jen McGarvey and I'm here to speak on two agenda items, so I'll be quick. I have two students that benefited from the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools Virtual Academy when it first started back in 2020. The Virtual Academy for my students and my family removed uncertainty over when and where we would attend school during the pandemic. Not only that, the Virtual Academy was a lifesaver for our family as I care for my elderly mother. And because she relied on our support to keep her healthy, not only mentally and physically, the Virtual Academy saved her life. Because we could reduce her risk of contracting COVID, we were able to save her where most other elderly were isolated. The VA is vitally important for many students that face learning differences like neurodivergence, social anxiety, disabilities, medical fragility, and fear for personal safety. Maintaining the VA as a standalone school assures that VA teachers who are trained in and passionate about teaching virtually are the ones leading our students' education. Secondly, as a parent of two early college high schoolers, I'd like to voice my support for the early and middle college calendar reconciliation. Because we're aligned with the Forsyth Tech, our school break is already very short. We only get three days. We have, while having a standard calendar is preferable, I understand, you need to understand the unique environment and needs of the early and middle college. I'd also like for you to remember that, in particular, when you're considering changes to the bell schedule for next year. What works all, what works best for all doesn't make sense for this very unique program. Thank you.
Wanda Mays?
Good evening, Chair Kaplan and Vice Chair Bohannon and the Board and Superintendent McManus. I'm here, as you would have guessed, to talk about the support for the Virtual Academy. As we know, that remote work as well as virtual learning is a major part of our fabric in our community and our society at this time for many reasons. Some have already been stated. It's beneficial for children, for families, as well as the staff who are part of the Virtual Academy. And as was stated already, some of these staff members, even though I looked at this PowerPoint, you said people are gonna be allowed to go into open positions. As what was already stated, many cannot because of health reasons, because of other reasons. That's why they chose to continue their passion working in the Virtual Academy. Some children, for whatever reason, whether it's social, emotional, mental health, physical, they cannot go into the brick and mortar setting and feel safe. One of the things that Winston-Salem Forsyth County School has going for them is the fact that there are many options and that we try to meet the needs of our families and our community. Please reconsider keeping the Virtual Academy intact. It is a necessary option for many of our families, our students, as well as the staff. Thank you.
Katie Sonnenleeb? Okay, all right. We will conclude our public comments and we're moving on to discussion items. We have five items for discussion tonight. First, Kevin Sherrill, our Chief Technology Officer, will discuss Infinite Campus Student Information System Conversion.
Good evening, Chair Kaplan, Vice Chair Bohannon, Board Members and Superintendent McManus. I'm gonna bring Kelly Moore up in just a moment. But as you, as you're aware, our district uses Power School for our student information system and we have for over 10 years now. And it's a state-driven system. The entire state, every district in the state uses that system. A couple of years ago, the state put out an RFP to replace that system and they've chosen a product called Infinite Campus. So to comply with the migration, all, all districts across the state are being asked to migrate from Power School over to Infinite Campus. This is a two-phased approach. We had two years to do this and we elected to be in Phase Two, as well as many other large districts did as well. I personally made that decision. Kelly was pushing me to do that. But I made that decision because I wanted to see the bumps in the road from the other districts on the conversion and learn from, from some of that. So I think it was the wisest decision for us. But we are actively engaged in that project now. We have a Go Live date of July 1, so we will use Power School throughout this second semester. As we go into July, July 1, we'll transition all of our teachers and all of our staff that use Power School will be using the new Infinite Campus platform. So without sharing any more, I'm bringing Kelly, Kelly Moore up. She's our Director for Student Information Systems and she's gonna share an overview of the project, the timeline, and just, and just kind of a high-level look at where we're heading and some of the, some of the impact that we're gonna have over the next several months. And let me get the presentation up for you, Kelly. Hang on. Any glasses?
Good evening, Board Chair Kaplan, Board Members and Superintendent McManus. Thank you for giving us time to come talk about technology tonight. Us tech nerds get a little excited when we have something new. So we are a little excited about something new, even though it's a big change. I have been involved with Power School myself when the conversion happened from NCYS to Power School. So it is a big change and it is something that will take a lot of work to get everyone acclimated to a new system, but we are very excited about it. Kevin is right. We did opt for Phase Two. I just want to expand on that a little bit and say that DPI have learned a lot from the conversion from NCYS to Power School. Some of you teachers that have been here for a while probably were also involved with that conversion. But it, it didn't go great and they've learned a lot from that. So I decided, and Kevin together, we, we decided to wait for Phase Two so that we could see how it went for those Phase One schools. And so I think it was a good decision to do that. So DPI realized in that conversion from NCYS to Power School that they needed more support for the school systems. So they have provided that. When you look at the team that we have listed on the slide, our Infinite Campus conversion team consists of five people. And back in the day, when it converted from NCYS to Power School, you probably had one support person per district. So they have learned a lot and I think it will help us to be better prepared for teachers converting and students and parents because it will involve them also. But we have five Infinite Campus team members, business consultant, a data conversion analyst, assist training specialist, a project manager, and also a DPI training specialist. DPI also added a whole team of training specialists that they have never had in the CIS office before. So they, they heard the school system say, we need more training help. And so they are providing that in this conversion and I'm very excited about that. We also have a district implementation team. We had our first meeting in December and it includes people, which I'll show you in a minute, from different departments in the district and leadership to help us prepare for the conversion. When we convert our data, we are gonna start with a testing site. We're actually gonna have, provided to us a testing site, a staging site for us to stage new products that come out with Infinite Campus so that we can see those before they're put into production. And we will also have a production site. The modules that we are gonna implement in Winston-Salem, there are several modules that we're not implementing, but we chose to implement the CIS, of course. We have no choice about that. It involves the Student Information System Parent Portal and a student portal that will change. So, you know, parents and students will also have to have new apps on their phones, new applications for Infinite Campus. We are gonna use the campus online registration. We currently use Power School online registration. The great thing about Infinite Campus online registration is that it gives us the capability of enrolling students within our district on an online platform. Power School enrollment did not provide that for us. So students moving within the district or coming from outside the district can all enroll now online. And so I think that's a move forward into the 21st century to have it all online because I think that's where everything is going. We should be moving there. It also comes with a campus messenger with voice and the Communication Department is aware of that. We currently use an app-to-G system, but it could be that we could convert to using this messenger system that is built into Infinite Campus. You wouldn't have to send files to an application to make calls and to make texts and messages. So we are implementing that. It has a campus analytics suite for data analytics, which provides student data that we can track students graduate, by graduation score from kindergarten to 12th grade. So it has a whole analytics package that we don't have currently with Power School. We have had to purchase outside products for that. So I'm hoping that will take the place of some of those applications that we use. It also comes with a data suite, which builds reports for us to know for data integrity cleanup projects that we will need. It comes with that application also. And lastly, it comes with something called Campus Passport, which all staff and teachers, everyone will be having an account set up in Campus Passport. It is the training site and the knowledge-based materials for campus, for Infinite Campus that they will use to take training videos and all that. And it's a great platform. I've been in there. I've watched every single teacher video already and I think they're gonna be very pleased with that. And the training site videos are, are very, very well published. So I, I think it's a very good thing. This is the timeline for our implementation. There are four phases that Infinite Campus sets up as their methodology. The first is initiation. We met our team back in October. It was late October before Phase Two. People got to meet their teams, but we met our teams and, and we started sending them information about our school system. During November, December, we started sending them our school setup, our school bell schedules, our school time of days and things that we did. We had to send all of that in early so they could start building out our first trial site. The third phase is what we're in right now is during the implementation. They have pulled our data recently and started looking at it. We are getting ready to implement the first trial site, which I should have access to early February. So they're getting ready to set that up at the end of this month. And so I'm very excited to see how the data is gonna convert. But from what they've looked at so far, they have been very pleased with how it, the conversion is going to look. The Go Live is, as Kevin said, July 1, with hopes that we might could be in a little bit earlier. But that is our target time right now for the production site to be available. This is our district implementation team. You can see that our Technology Department is our core team, heavy lift from, from my department and Home on Adishfar's Department, who has been helping us build out lots of reports right now for our data cleanup. And then all the departments in the district represented with leadership. And we will keep meeting and updating and making decisions based on each department's needs for our new Infinite Campus CIS. So what are we doing to prepare? We are working on cleanup and files. We have started in August, bringing data managers in once a month. The Phase One conversion for schools had issues with demographic data and in, in Infinite Campus. They have households and census data. And so the terminology is different. And when you're converting data, it's sometimes apple to oranges, right? So you have to make sure that what you have in Power School is actually gonna convert well to Infinite Campus. So our data managers, I'm gonna give them a shout out tonight because they have worked hard every month. And, and since August, they have come every month to the lab and they have worked on their schools. And I'm so proud that they have put that work in. They looked at our data this week from Infinite Campus and they said for a district our size, they were extremely pleased in how that first look at the census data is gonna convert. So I'm very, I'm very proud of the work that they have put in. We have data analysts with Infinite Campus. They analyze our data and get back with us. We have had trainings. Like I said, Home on's team, my team, we have been to week-long trainings and we have monthly meetings with our district implementation team. One big thing that we have to do to prepare this year that I had to notify the schools and district leadership about is that we have to have scheduling completed on an earlier timeline than we ever have. We usually have worked on schedules up until the very last minute in Power School to the very ninth hour. And so we now are gonna have to have our schedules completed by early May because they're gonna pull our data basically about three days after our last day of school and convert that data to Infinite Campus. They will pull one or two more transcript pulls, but I, we have to have our data ready early this year. And so that is a state timeline. That's not just a Winston-Salem timeline. Every district is being given that same timeline for Phase Two. So it's not just us, but it is something that is a change this year. And so we're gonna have to work hard on our schedules to make sure that they are ready by that time. That's, you know, schoolmaster schedules and student schedules ready for the next year. Okay, so everybody's gonna need training, right? Teachers, school staff, administrators, district office staff, everybody. We have our first training meeting at the end of this month. And we will be setting all of our training dates at that time. We will be setting up passport accounts for all staff to be able to log in and start walking, watching their, their modules that they're gonna have to do. And that's what I want to talk about. Campus Passport and Knowledge Base. In Infinite Campus, they will, they used a flipped classroom model for training. You watch your videos and then you meet with a live trainer. So that is how we will be training our staff. We will assign those modules to you first. They have to be watched because when you go into the meetings with the live trainers, you need to go with questions and we need everybody to complete their modules. We will be tracking that and notifying you and multiple times notifying you. But we will be setting all those dates coming up very soon. So staff within, you know, Winston-Salem can be start looking for some of that to come out in February. We will have a practice training site, which is great. So even before school starts, they could be able to log in and practice putting an assignment in as a teacher, practice putting a grade in for a student, practice taking attendance. So that will be very helpful. We are gonna use a Train the Trainer module. All the schools have something called Gradebook Gurus that I communicate with quite a bit on training and they will work to train their school staff. And then my office will also be out at schools and offering training too. So I feel like we will have that plan out very soon to the, to the staff at all the schools and the district office. We are planning on using some of the reserved days at the beginning of the year to focus on making teachers comfortable for starting school in a new system. Okay, that's a brief overview. Do you all have questions for me about Infinite Campus?
Board Member Waugh?
First of all, thank you. Thank you to all who've involved. I've survived SIMs, NCYS and Power School. Now it looks like I'm about to jump into affinity, so.
And beyond.
And then beyond, affinity and beyond. So again, kudos to all who are involved in working with this effort. But I do have a question concerning, and I understand it's all DPI's timeline, but to me, when you talk about the master schedule is final in the summer, there are so many variables that impact our master schedule that sometimes we have no control over. For instance, if I'm, if I'm at a school and I'm a principal, if I lose a teacher over the summer for whatever reason and I can't over the summer for whatever reason, and I can't find another teacher right away, I'm going to have to change my other teacher math one schedule to accommodate that missing piece. So, and I know a district this size, how do we handle that?
Well, when I say the master schedules have to be built, I mean the schedules have to be there. Can we still collapse a section, and can we still add a section in the summer? Yes, we can. We just can't rebuild an entire master schedule for a school in a summer in a system that we don't even, I don't even know how to use yet for scheduling. One of the things from Infinite Campus that we have discovered is that they're going to really work with us for scheduling next school year. So, they haven't even, even the classes I've been to, not one has addressed scheduling yet. So, they're going to wait and hold that. But it doesn't mean you can't make teacher changes. You can't make, you know, can't collapse a section or add a section. That's not, that's not, we know those things happen, especially when you talk about elementary school, when, you know, their kindergarten enrollment, you know, we push hard to get that started in the spring, though a lot of times, you know, parents don't come and enroll until right before school starts. So, that changes your, you know, your dynamics a lot. So, yes, they can still make those small changes. Yeah, thank you.
Board Member Kuhn?
Oh, sorry. Board Member Crowley, sorry. Yes, so for making those changes, you said three days after school ends, that's when schedules would be due. So, when would be the first opportunity for it to be open for editing?
Open for what? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that.
For making changes, for editing that, like if a kid says, "I wanted to take AP Lit," and then he decides, "No, I think I'm just going to take something else," and they make those changes.
Well, we changed student schedules over the summer. We will still continue to do that. They've never had access to go in and change their schedules until after we come back up. You know, we're always down at the end of June, that week of the fourth in Power School, so that timeline will be the same. We can't change anything until we come back up in Infinite Campus, right? So, when we allow parents and students in there, that timeline hasn't been determined, but that's usually, they're usually working with their counseling staff in the summertime making schedule changes, and that, that won't change. Okay?
Okay.
They don't usually get their schedules until later anyway, so, you know. But if they, they think they, you know, know that they need to change something, they need to just contact their counselor, and when the system does come up, you know, they'll have record of those changes that they need to make, I'm sure.
Board Member Kuhn?
How does this program communicate with Canvas?
Okay, so I was going to mention that. There is a learning system within Infinite Campus, but we're not utilizing that this next year. So, Infinite Campus does integrate with Canvas. They have told us that it has. At this point, we haven't worked with any, setting up of any applications, but teachers will still be able to use Canvas, and it will still work. This next year, we will be keeping Canvas, and we, we did not, we're not implementing the learning module system from Infinite Campus this year. So, they will still have Canvas, and it does integrate with it.
So, is it, the, the goal is to not have Canvas in the future?
We haven't set any goals around that whatsoever. That might be something that come to the table later, but we've not looked at that at all yet.
All right, thank you.
Vice Chair O'Hannon?
So, I had two questions, but then that question had me at a third. So, I'll start with that one. So, what, what were the factors that contributed to the decisions to use which model, so like the module? So, I know that you said that you, the ones you chose, there were more that we could have chosen, but we didn't.
Well, I think the learning module system was really the only other one that we chose not to implement because we knew that it would be too much of a change for teachers right off the bat. The other modules, I'm trying to think of the other modules that we didn't implement. We're taking a lot of the modules. Do you remember the others? Yeah, but they're going to, they're going to put the analytics in for us, I think. So, yeah, but we're keeping, yeah, Unified Insights, thank you, Unified Insights for another year also, just to see how it works with it. There's not too many modules we're not taking within it. Just the learning system was probably the biggest that we decided that, you know, we didn't want to, we didn't want to do that to our teachers yet. We, we would have to bring a, you know, focus group in to talk about that before we ever even considered that.
Okay. So, I know the, the kind of adoption of Infinite Campus was, Campus was a result of the RFP that the state did a couple of years ago, but for the person that's like, "I'm used to Power School. I liked Power School." Like, what, what, what can you say about what's going to be beneficial about the transition versus kind of remaining on Power School?
I, I will say, I think it's a much better user interface. I think the teachers will like the module a lot better from what I've seen from that standpoint. It is more modern, it's definitely a more modern system than Power School. It has better reporting capabilities. It has, like I said, better teacher learning center. I, I think from a user standpoint, they will find it a lot, a lot easier than Power School was in a lot of ways.
Okay. And then, my last question is that Infinite Campus is similar to Power School in that it's cloud-based, and the information are stored on servers that aren't our own, that are, that belong to the company that owns Infinite Campus. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes. Board Member Brown Gaither?
My only concern, because I went through all of those that Richard just mentioned, by the way. And, but when we brought, and I know Canvas is different, but when we brought on Canvas, teachers had to do that in the summertime, and we were assured that it was going to be a lot easier than what it was. It took forever, and I know that for a fact, with no help at home. And I see people shaking their heads. I just don't want this to be a case, but this is something else that teachers have to do on their own, at home, in the summer.
Right. Okay, so, the modules will be assigned this spring to our current teachers, okay? They can still access them all summer long if they want to, right? But I'm hoping that they will watch the modules this spring and come back, and there'll be meetings also with trainers that they'll attend probably this spring for our current teachers. They will have access this summer if they want to. I, I'm not planning on setting up any training for teachers in the summertime that they have to attend. I'm hoping to do all that before school is out. I do realize that watching modules is obviously not going to occur while you're teaching a classroom, so it, it is going to be homework for everybody, not just teachers, but, you know, office staff and other people at the school too, to watch the modules. There will be trainings that we offer as a district, and again, I haven't even started the training plan or even met with the training person yet to know how they roll out the training in the other school districts. I really won't know that until the end of the first week of February after our second meeting together. So, you know, I'm welcome to people to email me ideas if they have that, and I will be meeting with the district implementation team also, which includes curriculum, people, and the likes of that, so that they can help us to decide how to roll out training best for teachers. The new teachers coming in in the fall obviously are going to have to do it when, when they're hired in the fall, the modules, and we'll assign that to all new staff, just like we, just like we are now.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kevin, and you're also going to give us a Tyler ERP update?
Yes, thank you. So, if Infinite Campus project is not enough, we're also changing our, and replacing our financial and HR systems in the very near future. Let me get that presentation up so I can click and talk at the same time. Fun fact, I guess, is we've been on the same financial system since the mid-'80s. I'm 54, and I was in my, I was 10, 12, 13 then when that was put in. So, also a state-driven system, and they are now pushing all districts with a timeline to modernize the financial systems along with our HR system. So, we are actively engaged in this product, project, and our timeline, you see here on the, on the screen, the small print doesn't really matter, but we have two go-lives. We have a go-live this coming July for our financial system, and I'll talk more about that in just a moment. And then, a year from now, December 31st, January 1st timeframe, we will go live with payroll and all of our HR functions. So, there's two phases of this project, and we've been working on it for about eight months now. It's a daily process that we're working through. So, Phase One, what is it? It's all things finance. I've got a great partnership with, with Tommy Krantz and his staff. We've been spending a lot of time together, so we're looking at budgeting child nutrition accounts, receivable accounts, payable, purchasing, accounting, all things finance outside of employee payroll, or what we're working on now for our go-live in, in July. And I will say, we've got, we've got a strong implementation team internally and also with our Tyler folks that we work with every day, and we are, we are ahead of schedule with where we need to be on these modules, and I'm very happy about that. So, who does it affect this Phase One? So, it's obviously Tommy's team, the entire finance department, all of our department leaders and admin assistants as far as putting in requisitions and things, they'll have a role, our child nutrition, how they do business, and how it interfaces with, with the finance department for the school district, our school finance managers at the school level, and of course, our principals. All these, these employee groups here will be the first ones that will need training, and some of it's very minimal, like a principal would need to know how to approve a purchase order. So, very small task as opposed to some of Tommy's team, they have daily things that are very, very complex that they're being, that they're learning to do. So, in preparation for that, we've got module training happening every day. We've got configuration of all the modules that we're working on to set up, all our vendor files and those kinds of things. We've got over 800 user accounts that have been created with security roles and everybody getting their log-ons and those kinds of things, developing security workflows. So, all the processes inside of, of this, this software package comes with workflow, approval processes, and those kinds of things. We're developing all that process flow behind the scenes, and we've also loaded three years' worth, well, two years now, a third year will come once Tommy closes out 24, of historical AS400 data being imported into the new system for us, for archive. So, going forward from January to July, as we work towards this go-live, the system's built, it's, it's there, the data's there. We're working through user acceptance testing that's starting up in, in January and February, where we'll go line by line, by every task that anyone that touches this system has to do. We test it, and we prove that it's, that functions as it's, as it should. And then, obviously, end-user training for the employee groups that I mentioned, and of course, Tommy can attest to this, there's, there's a ton of DPI integration that we have to do for reports that we send to the state, and we're working on all that with DPI on a, on a weekly basis as well. And we're doing that through instructor-led training. We've got a war room set up there in the, in the finance department. We have onsite meetings every day. We have stuff online. We've got folks, I've got consultants in Idaho, we've got some that are face-to-face here in North Carolina, and we've just got lots of folks happening, working with us every single day on these modules, and I could share the, the implementation calendar with you if you'd like to see it. It's pretty, it's pretty busy. In many of our departments, especially like accounts payable, purchasing, they are live in the training system now, and they are practicing. They do something in the AS400 that day, then they turn around and do that same task in the new system as, as a, as a training, hands-on training. So, we're doing a lot of that, and we'll do more of that as we go forward. And then, of course, I won't get too deep into this because I'm sure we'll bring more updates, but the second phase will be all of our HR processes, our onboarding, our recruitment, personnel actions, and of course, all payroll, employee expense, employee self-service, all those are part of Phase Two, which we're on a 12-month window on that now. That work is happening. We're doing a lot of build-out on that now, but that will be the second phase after we get past July. And just real quick, this is, if it didn't timeout on me, this is what the new interface looks like. So, this is our production site here, so it's a web, web-based interface, menu-driven, so it's just, you can access it from anywhere. Right now, we have a lot of, a lot of problems with our timing. We have to shut down the system because everything's, nothing's web-based. You've got to be off the network to run certain processes, but now that it's cloud-based and hosted, we won't have those issues. So, questions? It's a lot of work. It's long overdue. We're going to get it done.
Yes. Board Member Watts?
Not a question per se, but first, again, I'd know a thank you to everyone who's involved in this very complicated process. I hate to ask this because it does involve money, but are we okay with the current personnel to do dual roles in, in implementing this process, or do we need to look at additional hands-on, boots-on-the-ground people?
It's a very timely question there, Board Member Watts. We've, I think Tommy, actually, we brought some folks on this week for that very purpose. We're starting our parallel work, so bringing some folks into offset, and if Tommy wants to speak to that, then, then come on and do so.
If we'll ever bring on additional personnel, because we'll be running two complete systems on the parallel side, and there's no way with the number of transactions that we do that the existing team can do that. So, like today, we had an individual started, we're running parallel on cash, and we'll start taking it from there, process by process.
Vice Chair O'Hannon?
So, I thought really, sorry, Kevin, really quickly, I thought in like the five-point, whatever million or six, whatever the total amount was, we had baked in some money that included addition, like the potential for addition?
That's correct.
Okay. So, it's not an additional, like, we won't be asked for an additional, for additional?
No, we accounted for all, many staff, we accounted for that on when we set the budget for this, Tommy.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thomas Krantz, our Chief Financial Officer, will discuss the fiscal year 2024 fund balance and give us an audit update.
Well, good evening, and I'm going to be quick. So, last year, our fund balance was right at $25 million. That consisted of restricted and unrestricted. You look at where we ended right now, and we're at a preliminary stage. The audit we expect, I expect to get the, the final draft for one more review toward the end of this week. Now, last year, just to give you an idea, we issued that opinion, was issued on January 8th. This year, it's going to be a little bit later. To tell you how the state's doing, though, we have all had the date of October 31st as the due date. The state has decided it can't be accomplished because many districts are not able to do it. So, the date now has been extended, will be from this date forward, December 31st. So, they've acknowledged that it just physically is not happening. In our case, if you keep the stabilization and the inventory's flat, which is what I did, we come down to an unrestricted balance, meaning you can do whatever you'd like with those funds of, we were at 23 million, we're at 16, a difference of $9 million. The difference that takes place, and you can see from the 23 numbers to the 24 numbers from a comparison, for example, the Article 46. When we ran this, we had the reserve of about 5.2 million. You approved for us to go forward and disperse those funds. We did. So, now those funds are gone. That drops that down to zero. You can see on Hanes, we've incurred some expenses associated with the work there. You saw that reduced to where, working with the Facilities Department on the balance that was left over, and that's where you get the difference of the 9 million. Now, you will see after we finish these projects, and I'm anticipating strongly, if not next year, the following year, a significant growth in fund balance. The district runs with lots of cash. Never has enough, but there's lots of cash. And so, you'll see as we get everything, and then, you know, this has been a rough year in that ESER 3, ESER's gone. We've been audited there three times. That's part of what causes the delay. We got hit right around Christmas time for the final ESER audit of 19,000 records we had all go through and associated with our audit side, and that's the third one. We also had to do the valuation on some of the benefit programs that we do. Those took much longer than we anticipated. They traditionally take a long time. I don't know how you speed it up because you've got to have their certification. We can't do it ourselves. And next year will be worse. This year was just a dental plan. Next year, it's the entire benefits plan. That valuation will take about four months for us to pull it together. So, with that said, any questions?
Yes. Board Member Kuhn?
So, right now, our fund balance is the 11 million.
$16 million.
It's the 16.
Okay. Of, of the 16 million dollars, you back out, you're restricted.
Right.
And then, you come down that you have available, as I understood, we, y'all wanted a goal of $8 million. That was kind of a threshold. You right now are at $11 million.
So, that, that led, that is my exact question, is this includes kind of what we had as a board said we want to keep in there?
Yes, ma'am. The answer is correct.
So, that leaves us about 3 million that is not board-restricted, am I right?
No, your, your entire 11 million.
I know, but like when I say board, like we have kind of restricted.
Oh, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. You got an addition, you're correct, the 3 million, as you said.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry about that, missed confusion on my part.
Any other, any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Well, thank y'all very much.
Next, Chris Weigert, our Chief Human Resource Officer, will give us a virtual instruction update.
Good evening, Chair Kaplan, Vice Chair O'Hannon, Board Members, Superintendent Manis. Good evening, Chair Kaplan, Vice Chair Bohannon, Board Members, Superintendent Manus. Stand before you today to talk about a, give a, provide a virtual instruction update, provide a little history and then a recommendation as we move forward in offering virtual instruction to our students. Just a little history, virtual instruction in our system was a result of the pandemic. In 2021, 2020, 2021 school year, we took the hospital homebound school code and changed it so we could offer virtual instruction that year. And that's how the Virtual Academy came, we just repurposed the school code to make virtual instruction. When we first started, we had nearly 900 kids in K-12 as a response to the pandemic. And then just over the, you know, years, we've declined. At one point, we, after the year two, we separated the K-8 program to its own Virtual Academy and then had 912 at Kennedy as a Virtual Academy inside of Kennedy. And then last year, we actually consolidated down to 38. So we've had a two prong approach. And before I go any further, I just would be remiss if I just didn't say thank you to all of our teachers at the Virtual Academy. I actually had the opportunity to teach a semester at Virtual Academy because we were short of biology teacher years ago, and I know the work. So I appreciate it, it was a whole totally shift that occurred in 2020, and I know that was a big lift, so thank you. This, these recommendations have nothing to do with our staff's dedication, hard work, or commitment to children. All right, I just have to say that, just so I feel better when I go home tonight and sleep. So as you look at this, right now, we have this Virtual Academy standalone for 38, and these are our enrollments numbers as of month two. And you say, Chris, why do you use month two? Well, we get our allotments from the state based on the best one of two ADM. It's either month one, month two. This year, month two was a much better month for us than month one. So these are the numbers now, can they vary a little? Yes. For example, it says right now, we have 32 kids in grades three and four, and I'm gonna check my notes here just so I can try to speak correctly. Currently, we have 35 between those two, according to Power School as of this morning. All right, so I, and you might say, why did we abandon this? So we banned them because we have to think forward, because currently, our, you know, 38 school was 185. When we did allotments, we were planning on 215 students. Right now, as we look at third grade enrollment, we have one student who chose Virtual Academy third grade as their primary option, as option number one. We have less than 10 total that listed it as an option together, and that was as of Friday, what I got from Frank's Department of Student Assignment. So when we look at our enrollment moving forward, we're just, we're just having problems making a staff work, if you will. Currently, our system is providing almost eight extra teaching positions to offer a comprehensive program. So we also have our high school model. All right, and you can see it's embedded within Kennedy, you can see it's 113 numbers in the four grades. So what we're looking at to make sure we have a sustainable program for virtual instruction, so students that are in virtual instruction today can have it tomorrow, and we don't look at this, have to look at this every year about numbers, is we're looking at transitioning to a 612 virtual model that's a singular school, all right, embedded within Winston-Salem Prep, and that will phase out current third and fourth graders. So we're projecting enrollment, all right, based on the rising 68 numbers and then nine, the current 98 or 911, of somewhere between 200 to 300 kids. And the reason I give a range and just don't add it up, eighth graders actually have to apply for ninth grade high school. There's a lot of options. I mean, I heard a family talk about an eighth grader who then went to early college, middle college. We have lots of options here. And then we'd look at Cook Literacy Model School, a phasing out, we wouldn't take any more third graders, and fourth and fifth would be next year, and then the following year in '26, '27, it'd be fifth grade. Those were the numbers as a PR, you know, as a month two. Now, we could take more kids into fourth or fifth grade next year, over the next two years, as we could, you know, a class of 25 to 30 would be a number we could work with, and we can maximize our return investment for staff. You might say, well, hey, why do we have this? This is our rationale. Now, I will tell you, the research is mixed on the developmental appropriateness for virtual instruction. We have a lot more research than we have now, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of different research out there that discusses the importance of a social emotional learning, of being face to face, using manipulatives with a person, with a teacher in front of you, the small group instruction, what happens when technology doesn't use, but in the elementary school grades, and we were still at 35, learning to read. You know, we have a goal of 95 by 25, and we haven't quite made it there, so we know we still have to work with kids learning to read, all right, in the elementary school grades. So we're looking at the developmental appropriate, and I can tell you, I can find research articles that would say just the opposite of what I told you. So that is mixed, I'm just gonna say it right now. We also just have the thought of enrollment declining. Our virtual programs are true magnet programs with no attendance zone. I know that's obvious, it's virtual. All right, there's no neighborhood. All right, so we need, the programs need to be, have enough enrollment to support it. Now, we have lots, we have several programs at schools and brick and mortar schools that we have to sometimes provide extra teaching positions to, to make sure they have a comprehensive program. All right, but in this situation, our enrollment, especially when we think about third grade with only one or two students, is decreasing to a number that would be very hard sustained. And this is a conversation we're going to have year in and year out. So we're looking at it this year of saying, hey, let's look at that 612 model, Winston-Salem Prep is our one 612 model school. So currently, if we have a math teacher that teaches sixth grade at the Virtual Academy, all right, we do have one teacher who teaches sixth grade math. Currently, we have one at Prep. All right, we would actually have a natural collaboration there. All right, and we can also maximize our teachers like we do at Kennedy. So at Kennedy, you know, some teachers, there are a few teachers who teach all virtual sections. All right, and there's some who teach some virtual sections, all right, and some face to face. We are not proposing a hybrid model where we're teaching both at the same time. That's not something we're looking at. The only time we do that, and it's very few times, is some really like advanced 12th grade level classes or CT courses. I think last year, we had two, I don't even know, we have one this year. So we're looking at the Prep because of the 612 alignment, and it's also a magnet school. There is, and I just, I think it's just, we just got to put it out there, there is a chance to increase the enrollment of Prep and Cook. Currently, Prep has about 375 students, so it's a little, it is larger than the Virtual Academy. And then Cook also, we know we're still working on increasing enrollment there. This will also allow us to focus our Kennedy programming on increasing the marketing for that program and CTE. We would like to see that be a premier CTE high school, all right, in our state. All right, and then, of course, there is a transition to some cost savings and improved efficiency for the district. And I want to explain how that works. All right, currently, we have some classrooms in all three schools that are very underutilized. All right, with the reconfiguring, all right, we can maximize the students in the classroom, and we're not talking like going 52 kids in a section, all right, just like the rest of the district, that'll improve our efficiency. Some key details, all right, we're not moving the option for virtual learning environment for any current enrolled students. All right, the model does change. All right, current staff will be open, transition to open positions within the school year based on our allotments. So it's not, it's not, I heard a comment that said, hey, well, they're just moving the salary. Well, if we're moving their salaries, it's because someone left and resigned. All right, so instead of having 4,000 teachers, all right, let's say we have 3,990. I just use that example, I'm not saying 10 positions. All right, we'll still offer, we still can offer instruction to our medically fragile elementary school through home, hospital homebound, as we did in the district before, and we also offer that in a virtual format some, where it's appropriate. So some steps we've already done, obviously, we communicated with the principals and the staff, we've met with the staffs to let them know before we came and presented. We just thought that was fair. All right, they should know what's being discussed, what's being discussed about their schools and their situations. Our next steps will be communicate with our families through a district message, we'll also communicate with the third grade families who selected this as an option, we'll have to adjust some magnet applications, we're going to host some connection meetings for parents to meet their new leaders and support teams. And then at the February 11th board meeting, if we go forward, all right, we're gonna, we'll host a public hearing regarding closing the Virtual Academy school code. There's a general statute, so we'll have a public comment, just as similar we do for naming a stadium. All right, and then the action item will include the recommendation to close the school academy, Virtual Academy school code. If you're, if you're okay, I have one more, some little more information I wanted to share real quick. Position wise, someone, the question may come like, hey, how did you get to $950,000? And I will tell you that these numbers may be low based on the ADM and what enrollment looks like across our district. Our enrollment in our district has declined. All right, so our, our positions decline, it's just, it's prorated, or it's relational. And these are just positions that we know will probably come off the local budget. Now, I'm not saying all Virtual Academy teachers are funded locally, it's a total number. We have more teaching positions and more assistant principals and more office support everything than the state allot. So we have a number of positions that are on local funds. If we didn't, the model we're looking at, we'd save an assistant principal position, three office support, I'm gonna say 6.5 teacher positions, because there could be a lot of different things on teacher scales. All right, we save at least one instructional support person, that's like a counselor type position, and we'd save the principal's local supplement. And this is just the, the start of it, it could be actually a little more, I mean, we, like I said, we have to fund a lot of extra teachers just to offer a comprehensive program at the Virtual Academy because of declining enrollment. We held them harmless in the teacher wise, in the, in the general ADM teachers when their enrollment didn't make this year. So I mean, now, they had some adjustments and some EC things, but EC teachers, that was based on student caseloads. Otherwise, they were held harmless. So, you know, we kind of, we're just kind of at a spot where we're trying to make sure we can continue to offer virtual instruction on a continuous basis within the confines of the staff. Questions, please?
Can we go back to the slide?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
I might have several. If I need to like pause and let somebody else go, I can. Okay, so a couple of things that come to my mind when I'm, when we're talking about this, just to think about. Is there a reason why we couldn't go back and attach virtual to hospital homebound?
We, we actually have a hospital homebound school code. We set, we, after we attached this one, then we created a new hospital home, hospital homebound school code, which, you know, some students on hospital homebound, all right, do attend the virtual, but not all, some have, actually go to that, the other school code, this one, depending on their situation.
But there's no way to attach the Virtual Academy to that, so that it can still operate as if, but in a branch of hospital homebound instead?
You would still be in the same position of not having enough students to support your comprehensive program.
Okay. So my next question is, can you clarify or help me understand a couple of things? One, you said that we, Virtual Academy has eight extra teachers to make it comprehensive. Can you explain that?
Yes, ma'am. So when you look at your allotment form, let me, let me pull up here exactly. So, for example, you have 32 students for those two grades, that makes one third grade class and a very undersized fourth grade classroom. So we offer 1.2 en core teachers for two classrooms. Now, they are used for middle school. So if you look at your high school, your middle school grade is 98 plus 55, you know, there, we had to put additional positions so they could have their foreign language, they could have PE to make sure the class is made. For example, when you have 32 kid, let me use sixth grade, let's say you have 32 sixth graders. All right, well, you, normally, you say that's one sixth grade class. Well, what if you have some students that are advanced sixth grade math, and you start doing the different accelerated pathway? You have an accelerated course and then a regular course. So then you, ideally, it'd be 16 and 16, but really, it doesn't work that way. And then you have a class that doesn't, you know, it's an underutilized class, so that costs us extra sections of instruction, which then costs you extra positions.
And do those eight extra teachers come out of local funds or state funds?
They will come out of the fund source the finance officer chooses, and the reason I say that, think about, this is a total cost, it's a total position. So the eight positions would ultimately, when you have underutilized class, even if the teacher's not paid from a local, they're coming from a local fund. Because it's just a matter of we move people around from the highest paid people to state funds, and we move the lowest paid people to local fund. So you may have a school that looks very locally funded, and you may have one that looks very state, it's about the positions, total positions.
And the collaborative teaching, so you said that this was not going to be a hybrid model, so our folks are not going to be teaching virtual students and in-person students, correct?
At the same time.
At the same time.
Correct, that's hybrid, yes.
But they would potentially be asked to teach an in-person class in addition to?
Yes, ma'am, it's possible, depending on what enrollment numbers look like in the makeup schedule, they could teach, let's say, I'm gonna use sixth grade math, this is, I taught sixth grade math, so it's an easy one for me to choose. All right, they might have two sections of sixth grade math face to face and one, one virtual, and then let's say, I know we're on a seventh, sixth, a fourth one, that's advanced sixth grade. And I will, let me acknowledge, I realize that's two different Preps. All right, let's, you know, what it is.
And outside of the physical space changing, that's the other piece, that's really the only other piece that changes, is the physical space and the teachers would be teaching both in-person and virtual?
That's, that's the main change, but let's, I want, you know, I believe in you, you got, just call it out the way it is, I mean, right now, our Virtual Academy has a 38 community. All right, so now it's going to be transitioning to a 612 community embedded within the school. All right, that does give some good chance for collaboration, all right, and, you know, crossover, but we're not going to be asking sixth graders to go do face to face things with other kids, sixth graders who are face to face, you know, virtual and face to face at the same time, or unless they just choose to participate in those school events. But, you know, there is a change in the cultural environment for the staff, and then let's, the students have a relationship with teachers, they have a relationship with staff, we know that. But this allows us that continuity to move forward.
Board Member Brown Gaither.
Okay, I guess I have several questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so my understanding is that we're not dissolving Virtual Academy, but it's taking on a new location. So what happens, okay, so then, I've had several people to contact me.
Sure, yes, ma'am.
The question came up that they were told, and I don't know, that Winston-Salem Prep teachers would fill the positions, and then the Virtual Academy teachers and staff, I guess, would try to find other positions if there were some available. But if they can't come back to an in-person because of medical reasons, how does that affect them?
All right, so I'm gonna go, you gave me a two part of it, okay, I'm gonna go with the first part, all right? There may have been a third one, but I may have just missed it, okay? I know you'll get me if I, you'll, you'll help me, keep me straight. All right, the first part is, is how do we staffing? That bases, based on allotments and ADM, all right, and how we work schedules. All right, is there possibilities that some virtual staff will not transition to Prep? Yes, ma'am, there is a possibility, all right? It will occur in some cases, because there are some classes that only, because of their specialization, all right, you already have a teacher at Prep that might be able to do it. All right, I'm trying to think of a position off the top of my head, it'll be something special, like a, some kind of specialty, let's say you have a Spanish teacher, you're saying, and we had some sections, there's, I don't know, there's a strong possibility. All right, now, the other question that kind of, that came up in our meeting with the staff is like, hey, do we get preference on the virtual instructional over the face to face? And at that point, I said, I can't commit to that, because that's the principal's call. After a conversation with Principal Gabriel, she was like, obviously, I'm gonna, you know, people who have the skill are ready, I'm gonna place there, and I'm like, fantastic. Because that's ultimately the principal's call of who gets to teach what. You know, it's not something that we can, we typically dictate from the central office. So there is a strong possibility they'll be going over there, however, I think the one key part is, is the staff who are being displaced, they're going to have a choice with this. Some of our staff may choose that I don't want to go to Winston-Salem Prep and teach virtual, I don't want to teach them face to face and virtual, I may just want to teach face to face. If I can't do, if I have to split, all right, what we're going to do, before we have, after intent window, before we place transfer, before we open the transfer window, all right, we will be placing in a one-on-one meetings, we'll have a list after allotments are done, we'll have a list of all of our vacancies, we're going to meet with this Virtual Academy staff, all right, these are our options, give us, you know, your top two choices. All right, and we're going to give preferential placement to them. That does not count against their voluntary transfer, all right, so they still have options going forward, so they'll have the first, you know, options before we even open the transfer. All right, now, with that being said, all right, so we're really going to prioritize. Now, with the medical situation, all right, even in our own, our board teleworking policy, the teleworking option is, it's not supposed to be in lieu of FMLA or something like that. We're going to work at the best we can. Now, I will be the first one to say, when we're saying folks are coming back to, you know, face to face in the building, that may not work for everybody. So that may be some options we'll have to work through, and people have to make decisions what's best in their interest to their family. But with that being said, you mentioned, Ms. Coon had mentioned the comment earlier, hospital homebound. All right, in our hospital homebound program right now, we pretty much use part-time folks. All right, so there may be some opportunities with some, from very creative position management in improving our hospital homebound, where a couple of people who have multi certifications could be serving just hospital homebound kids that are in a virtual environment for those like 45, 60 day kind of short term things. So that's what we're, I So that's what we're, I, I refer to as taking some lemons and making some lemonade. Now, can I promise it's gonna work out every time? No, ma'am, I am, I don't, I can't predict the Powerball numbers. But those are the things that we're thinking about to make sure we meet both the student needs and our staff's.
Okay. Any other questions? Did you have another one? Board Member Good? You good? Board Member Watts? Okay, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
I'm sorry, do you have another one? Board Member Brown Gator?
I get, uh, uh, I'm just a little concerned, and I guess maybe I read this completely wrong, and that might be my own problem. Because I, I really felt like we were keeping, first of all, let me say this publicly, I've never been one who, to like Virtual Academy. I'm, I'm just gonna say that.
Yeah.
And because I had to do it in 20 and 21, it was horrible, and it's probably why I retired, by the way.
You're not the first of her say that.
Yeah, it's, it's why I came out. And I found that we, we have not recovered from pre-pandemic. Our scores have not recovered. And I feel like our kids learn better when they're in-person. Now, and when I talked to a couple of people, they really explained some things to me, 'cause I'm like, and I think my board members know this, I said, well, why can't they go to North Carolina Virtual? And we bring our teachers back inside, because we have so many openings we cannot fill. And I was talking, and I did not understand with North Carolina Virtual that that's more, it's not set up like ours is set up.
That's correct.
So it's completely different, and I didn't realize that. So that made a big difference in my thought process, I will say that. But, um, and then I understood that now they have like, they have all these other activities. A Principal Moore talked about they have student council, and then I heard that they also have like dances, and the kids have, kind of, and that was always my concern about Virtual Academy, that they didn't have that interaction with each other. And create that kind of bond, and now I see that they do because they have several things that they do. And I think that's one of their concerns too, is, will that go away? Will, you know?
Those are all fair questions, and I will tell you that we will work our way through that. I would say that the students could participate in any, anything Winston-Salem Prep offers, yes. And then I'd also talk to Principal Gabriel and our magnet coordinator and things as such, is about how do we set up a school, you know, that, that, some of those things that you were talking about, that would not really work in a crossover environment? You know, how could you do it? Now, we, we wanna, anytime you're doing this embedded, you don't wanna have, uh, north and south poles. All right, you know, like two totally different worlds, we would like to have some, uh, crossover bit for our student council. I would think that would be more than a viable option. I mean, those are things we're gonna have to work through. And this is part of, part about us having communication with the staff, they bring this stuff up, and we'll work with Principal Gabriel to make it happen. We don't have all that stuff worked out, and I, I hope it's okay that we just, we admit and own that we don't.
Vice Chair Bohannon?
Thank you, so.
I was so close.
In turn, yeah, almost there. So, I think my question is about, when are we going to be asked to make a definitive decision one way or another?
Uh, we, we, we put on the agenda for the February 10th, I think, Tuesday, February 10th or 11th, uh, board meeting. Uh, and before that, we'll have that little public, let me go to my, February 11th, see? This is why you have a slide in front of you? All right, February 11th, uh, and we'll have a, we'll need to host a little public comment. Uh, we're not, we'll host a public hearing, not a little, it's a public hearing during the beginning of the board meeting, before you close the school code.
Board Member Watts?
And that leads to my question concerning the school code and testing and accountability, et cetera, et cetera. When you are closing one school code and then it goes into another school, I would like to see the data on how it may impact Winston-Salem Prep achievement data, attendance data, as well as COOK data, because again, sometimes, and I did hear some great things happening at the lower grades in Virtual Academy, but sometimes we're not careful when you put fragile schools together, it may not, it may have a, may have a negative impact on the school report card.
Yeah, well, uh.
So I'd like to see the data.
Yeah, I'll, I'll work with Andy to, uh, compile that, all right? And we'll try to get some three-year trend data for you, and then we'll also compare it to the district average, if that's okay, for those grade levels. Will that help? Fantastic.
Board Member Kuhn?
I forgot one. The Virtual Academy, if I recall, is currently on a waitlist, correct?
Um, they do, we have, they have a waitlist of like 30 students. The, you, we allotted at two, we allotted the school for 250, 210 or 215 students, I have to look to my number here. All right, we only have 180. I cannot speak to why we're not, I don't know the procedure, exactly why we haven't been admitted. It might be timing of the year. You currently, if you look at the enrollment data, uh, you know, I guess the question is, how many students do you want in any section? Uh, and if I ask my, uh, Virtual Academy teachers out here, they, they're gonna tell me a different number than the state might tell me. So, uh, I'm not asking, I'm looking at y'all, all right? So, you, I can't speak to exactly why there's a waitlist, I will tell you that our numbers have decreased each of the past years.
I think it leads me to think, does changing anything allow more children to be served? Like, will those children be off the waitlist for Virtual Academy? And/or could there be something done currently, how it is with the numbers?
So, I, yes, ma'am, there's multiple parts there. One, I think we have to check, we need to clearly define the process with our student assignment magnet program going into Virtual Academy on, you know, waitlist and how many kids, we have to set capacities, all right? Clear, clear numbers, capacities, and emit them. And with the new model of going to, in a 6-12, we'll be able to do that a little better, 'cause we won't have to depend on one person that can, you know, asking someone to teach five preps is a little hard, asking someone to teach three, a little less. It'll give us more flexibility with clearing a waitlist and offering more sections. All right, and I could probably show that to you a little better in the budget meeting with some slides on how that would work. It's kind of hard to stand up here off the cuff and do it, uh, but it does allow you, 'cause you have more opportunities to learn.
Can I amend for a second? I, I have a question, not to put anybody on the spot, but if we, if we, if we can admit 200 and what, 15?
Yeah, we, we provided enough teachers for 215.
And we have, what, can I ask someone, maybe LaJoy or someone, why aren't the other kids, if they're on the waiting list, admitted then if we have space? Is, can anyone answer that, or do we have student assignment? Who can answer that? 'Cause that would be, that would be good to know.
It's already been said that the elementary, at the elementary levels, we are lower. But we have, um, so many more on the middle school level, so they're capped. So we've got one teacher teaching one thing, and one teacher teaching another thing, and we, like, the example that, uh, Dr. Weichert gave was for our sixth grade as an example. We've got 19 kids or something like that, but we don't have another, we don't have an advanced section, and so when you start looking at how many kids are in the class, we, we had to cap it, and so that's why there are many grade levels that are, uh, that we have, where we have all of the people on the waitlist. We can't, we don't have the capacity to serve those kids on those grade levels. So, any third grader, just let them in. Fourth grader, let them in. Fifth grade, but when we start looking at six, sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade numbers, which is where we have the bulk of our kids already.
Yeah, so currently, like, we have 32 sixth graders, I wanna say. I, I flipped my sheet, so I don't look like that.
Uh, no. Is it 32?
I'm, I'm, I'm correct, 32.
I'm sorry.
I looked up a power, so unless the power school's incorrect, then I'll talk to Kelly Moore. But, you know, we have 32 sixth graders, so that kind of gets where you, if you have just one teacher, uh, you have a section of 32, well, how many kids can you take in a virtual section? If you look at research, some will say up to 42. I bet if I look to my right, there'll be some sneers at me, so I'm not looking to my right. All right? So, you know, where does that section lie? And that's kind of one of the problems we have when we have a 3-8 school around 215 kids. You're kind of capped in that area, and it depends on the grade level. For example, if you have 55 eighth graders, that's great for two sections of each. All right, 32? Hmm, not so much.
Any other questions?
So, a number of the students that are attempting to enroll are also EC, and we've had some, uh, reduction in force, and so we've, we've lost the EC teacher, and as a result, the three EC teachers who remain, we are looking at making sure that we can serve those students already as we absorb the kids, since we've, we've had a loss. And also as a result, that another teacher resigned, and so we're trying to make sure that we are not, uh, in trouble with looking at how to, um, make sure those IEPs and accommodations and things are, are taken care of. And so, we're hiring, we're trying to hire, but can you imagine, as we interview all of these good folks, explaining the situation that we're in, looking to not even be present next year? So it, it's going to be a hire for the rest of the, the school year, but again, how can we let those students who have IEPs in when we're already trying to make sure the ones that we have currently are being served according to their, uh, their IEPs? So, that's another thing.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, next, Tricia McManus, our Superintendent, and Alexander Hoskins, Executive Director of Systems Coherence and Strategic Planning, will give us a Future Ready Implementation Plan's Quarter One Data Review. I'm gonna turn it right over to Alex. I'm, I'm looking at the time.
So, good evening, Chair Kaplan, Vice Chair Bohannon, Board Members, and Superintendent McManus. This is one of the presentations that was supposed to come to you back in December, if you will recall, that was postponed till today. We did not do very much of an update from that point, so some of the data is a little bit on the old side, but, but we wanted to leave it pure for where it is, so that when we come back and give you the data for the next quarter, we can really show the distinction between where we were and, and where we are. So just as a reminder, that the Future Ready Initiatives, um, the Future Ready Priorities, we have three. We have the Promotion and Prevention Strategies around our Code of Character Conduct and Support. We have the Deeper Learning, um, and we have the Inclusionary Practices. Within our Future Ready Priorities, we have three goals that really emphasize that common understanding, the implementation, and the monitoring of those three priorities. In the first quarter, we had some progress in each of those areas. We did the training for Unified Insights, so that we can ensure that we are tracking our social-emotional behavior standard treatment protocols appropriately, and we conducted the listening sessions, and we're gonna talk a little bit more about those listening sessions further on in the presentation. For Deeper Learning, we had the Vision for Learning and Teaching Professional Development. We've talked a little bit about the Classroom Walkthrough Tool, and I'm gonna share some data from that tool, um, as part of this presentation. We have the Future Ready Learning Lab Teacher Launch, um, and then the Deeper Learning Alignment to the Universal Design for Learning. For Inclusionary Practices, we've been focusing on that Universal Design for Learning, or UDL, Professional Development at our 16 implementing schools, really focusing in on how do we remove the barriers for learning, and also focusing in on developing slide decks for scalability as we move the, the world of inclusionary practices forward. We've adopted this Theory of Action that talks about if we focus on the needs of every child, and we engage, develop, and support a highly effective workforce, and we equitably implement processes and allocate resources, and we hold one another accountable, then we transform achievement, behavior, and culture, so that all learners can thrive and have experiences to learn, play, and grow with their peers. And this Theory of Action has really become the heart of the Future Ready work in terms of how we approach things, and so the, the structure of the data collection tonight really walks through this Theory of Action, and we're gonna look at each of the blue boxes and the data that supports each of those, um, each of those components of the Theory of Action. So we're gonna start with if we focus on the needs of every child. So we're gonna start with the Promotion and Prevention Strategies with the Classroom Walkthrough Data. These data points represent the walks that were conducted by central office folks only, not the walks that were done at the school level. The calibration work that has been done, has been done among the central office leaders, and so we wanna focus in on the work where the folks have had the, the deep conversations around the, the Classroom Walkthrough Tool. And the, the percentages represent the number of times that an opportunity to observe one of these strategies was observed, and then was actually seen with fidelity. So if we take a look at one, just as an example, getting attention, so the teacher needs to get the class's attention. The way the Classroom Walkthrough Tool looks is that it gives four points that someone should observe in order to get the class's attention. If the teacher appropriately uses all four of the, um, of the cues within that, then you can mark that as implemented with fidelity. If not, then you can't mark it as, as seen with fidelity. So, so right now, we're, we're at 27%, so that means that we've got a little bit of work to do with that, and it's a growing edge for us. Also wanted to highlight the First Response to Behavior Concerns, 'cause that one's a little more vague. The others are, are kind of clear in terms of what they are, um, but that First Response to Behavior Concerns is a number of strategies that when you see a student who's starting to fidget in his or her seat, or you see a student who's starting to lean over and whisper to a neighbor, or the, the, the bad behavior is about to start happening, you, they're starting to bubble over, what can a teacher do to be able to address that in a, in a timely manner? And these are some of those strategies. And, and you can see that, that our, our teachers are, are doing a good job of, um, of conducting themselves within the First Response to Behavior Concerns. This da, this data deals with our exclusionary consequences, our in-school and out-of-school data. You can see that we have seen a drop in all of the data points that we are tracking, which is a good thing, and it does not necessarily, to Mr. Daniel's point earlier, indicate that there is an improvement in behavior, but it does reflect that some of the strategies that we are using in terms of, maybe it's that first response, maybe it's the development of a mentor relationship, maybe it's a check-in, check-out. There could be lots of different strategies that we're utilizing, and making sure that we're using our promotion and prevention strategies with fidelity in order to enhance student skillset to be able to make better choices behaviorally, and that that could be having an impact. We are still looking for the correlation, um, and, and we hope to be able to, to have , um, some, some, some correlation data for you at a future meeting. For Deeper Learning, we have some similar Classroom Walkthrough Data. Again, these are central office walks. These are the, um, the four Rs that are part of our, um, Vision for Learning and Teaching, and then the durable skills that are part of our portrait of a graduate, lifting up a couple of those in terms of the student actions, so that you can kind of see that a student, if a, if a lesson is rooted in curiosity and reflection, what might that look like? The student sees mistakes as part of the learning process and makes adjustments as needed, so that they can actually have the sense of, I can do this differently and, and have greater success. Rigorous and complex instruction, you can see it on that one. Is there, do they have the ability to evaluate, analyze, and connect information, and formulate ideas to determine solutions, as well as other points? So this is our Fall 2024 Panorama Data. As you know, we, we conduct the Panorama Survey twice a year in the fall and in the spring, so you can kind of see that for the pieces that, um, apply to our data points within the Future Ready Priorities, that our data is relatively consistent, um, and we hope that in the spring, we'll be able to show with the Spring Administration, um, some, some greater improvements around this data. The next section deals with if we engage, develop, and support a highly effective workforce. So this is our Professional Development. So what are we doing to help support teachers in their implementation of these three priorities? It's really all about the Professional Development. Within the Promotion and Prevention Strategies, Shannon Dobson is here tonight, and she and her team have, have, have 50 offerings plus to support student needs, um, around the topics that you see, really focusing in on depersonalization, restorative practices, and, um, and the trauma-informed and SCL components. So really making sure that our teachers and our staff members are able to support students in those promotion and prevention strategies. For Deeper Learning, the, the focus has been on looking at the, the Vision for Learning and Teaching, and really being sure that we provide, um, our instructional leadership teams, um, the skills that they need to be able to coach teachers to, to have good core instruction around deeper learning practices. Inclusionary Practices has been focusing in on that sense of belonging and the UDL Principle of Engagement, and Meredith Holmes is here tonight, and she leads that Professional Development work around the Universal Design for Learning and that engagement piece that focuses on welcoming students and establishing an environment of a classroom that, um, that honors effort and persistence. We have a total of 49 coaches and 20 We have a total of 49 coaches and 27 central office leaders that are out there helping support instructional leadership teams on these priorities. You can see some of the hours that have been dedicated in the first quarter to providing lesson design, instructional practices, instructional approach, and assessment and feedback support. I will say that some of those hours can be duplicated, so, so someone might go in and help with instructional practices within a lesson design and might check that box off, like check two different boxes off, so that 800 and 700 hours might actually represent one activity over two different pillars. We are still developing the Future Ready Staff Survey. It should go out within the next couple of weeks, so we'll have this data for you the next time we come back, also for the Inclusionary Practices. If we equitably implement processes and allocate resources, the Benchmark of Quality Data looks at school-wide core behavior indicators. This is a self-reported assessment, and school teams walked their schools at the beginning of the school year and completed this assessment to allow our area superintendents to be able to support the school teams with their development around their school-wide core behavior. So they are meeting this year or this month as part of their mid-year evaluation process to determine where is the gap and what they need to be working on, and then setting goals for how they need to, to shift practices between now and the end of the year so that this data can improve. So that work is being done with the school leadership, area superintendents, with the support of the school improvement directors. So you can see here are the, the data points around the expectations, around whether the expectations are visible, whether they are in user-friendly language, and whether they are, are out there to be seen, and then the idea of what, what school-wide core behavior indicators are in place at the, at the classroom level. So one of our data points is that at least 90% of students receiving exclusionary consequences for two or more incidents will receive an evidence-based ongoing behavioral intervention as documented in Unified Insights. We are at the beginning phases of this. This is one of our, our works in progress for this year. Our data shows that since the training has occurred, about 39% of students who have had referrals have had two or more referrals documented in Educator's Handbook. So, so we know that we've got some work to do around documenting the interventions that, that will hopefully help reduce that number of, of referrals in the future. So our EC Student Placement Data, this data has not shifted very much since we, we showed it to you earlier in the fall. We just added the data for the 16 implementing schools so that we can track and make sure that, that we are being transparent around where students are receiving their educational services at the implementing schools as well. We did conduct those listening sessions in all 81 schools, and I think you, you did receive the data around what that, what that ultimately looks like. And one of the, the best things that came out of it was the idea that there is, within the Code of Character Conduct and Support, there is a, a gap in terms of teachers not necessarily having clear understanding of the distinction between Tier One and Tier Two interventions. And, and so last week, we, we did some professional development around the Tier Two interventions and had great success and great engagement from our principals and assistant principals and our school-based teams around those Tier Two interventions. All schools completed a commitment plan, and, and they'll come back in March and be able to, to provide the results of what that commitment plan has looked like, and area superintendents will have access to those plans and be able to support their implementation as well. The See for Yourself campaign continues. We, we've had some, we've had a couple of, like, weather issues with, with these, and, but, but we're fingers, fingers crossed that we've crossed the, the weather hump for a while, and, and we will continue to engage our community to, to, to be welcome into our schools to see the wonderful things that our, our Future Ready students are, are doing. So again, just as a reminder that our goal is to have all learners thrive, feel a strong sense of belonging, and become future-ready. So this quarter, we are working on, we've got the launching of the Rides, the District Ride Bus Expectations. We are continuing to monitor the Unified Insights, and then, as I said, we've got that Tier Two Intervention Professional Development. Deeper Learning is continuing to provide professional development around the Vision for Learning and Teaching and Classroom Walkthrough Tool calibration. The Inclusionary Practices is going to focus in on the district coaches so that they can have a deeper understanding of the connection between UDL and deeper learning. Questions for me? Yes, ma'am?
And you may be referring to this when you speak to the coming soon on the, in the PowerPoint, but I know that we got some information from a survey from TAC. How are we going to use that and put that in and implement it within this?
Great, great question. So I, so actually tomorrow afternoon, there is a group of six of us meeting that are the leads on the Future Ready Priorities, and we are going to be looking at the Future Ready Action Plan and recalibrating and revisiting the, the data metrics that we need to be focusing in on and making sure that the action steps that we have for the second half of the year are the right ones for, for where we are. And that survey will be one of the data points that will be part of that conversation because we know that, that, that the data that TAC was able to, to collect was very informative and very helpful around under, having a deeper understanding of where folks really are with the Inclusionary Practices work. Yep? Yes, sir?
So Alex, you know, when I looked at that 35% of rigor, that slide there, that, that just kind of disturbed me because it's my understanding we're in a sense of urgency to, to increase our student achievement, and we're, we're trying to erase the achievement gap. So, and I, so I get all of this, this sounds great, but where is the urgency of the hour to make sure that, that at the end of this year, we've seen substantial growth in student achievement?
I think that, I think that the urgency comes within the, the laying of the foundation of these, of the, like, the intersecting points of these three initiatives, and that by focusing in on allowing for deeper learning to happen in an inclusive environment that is supportive of students who are hopefully following the, the code, that's where we're going to, that's where we're going to be able to move the needle, and that's why we've chosen these three priority initiatives as the focus for the work.
I will add, I'm going to add something really quickly about rigor, and I, I think that, you know, we have three of our schools right now that are working with instructional empowerment. I don't know if y'all remember at North Forsyth High, Kimmel Farm, and Mount Taber. And one of the, one of the things that we have to get clear on as a system is what rigor actually is. And our Vision for Learning and Teacher, Teaching outlines what that is, but how you do that in the room is where we really actually do have a gap. So what one person thinks is, oh, that's rigorous. When you, when you walk through with, with the rigor tool that we're using in those three schools, it's like, yeah, that's not rigorous. And it's looking at the task. Like, here's the standard. What task are we having the kids do that is really rigorous? And I think that you're going to see that there is definitely disconnect on what is, what is rigor. So what I will say is the urgency is lying in the fact that the district teams are out using those tools. I'm going to be coming back with you because, for, for an expansion of using the rigor walk tool because we're, we're, we're looking at that in comparison to what we're using for a walkthrough. The only way you have urgency around this is that people get immediate feedback, that we have a clear definition across the system on what is rigor look like in the classroom, and that people are getting feedback and support to like, to change those lessons, and that's with teachers, with teachers. So I think it is definitely an area that we are hyper-focused on right now, hyper-focused on with the walkthroughs that area superintendents are doing with, with, with principals and calibrating. But again, we've got a common definition of it, but it's like, what does that look like in action? To me, is where there's the disconnect. I will say that. Yep?
Yes, ma'am.
How many current classroom teachers had input in this Theory of Action and the priorities of the initiatives?
So the, the Theory of Action did not have teacher input. That, that was, that was a central office tool, and...
Wait, created by our central office?
Yes.
Okay, and no input from classroom teachers?
Correct.
Okay. And, and the reason I ask that is because that whole screen with the theory on it is just that. It's very theoretical. It does not seem based in reality at all, and that's based on subbing in classrooms. It's, it's just not, it, it's putting all the onus on the teachers that, that they somehow aren't doing what they're supposed to be doing, and if they would just do what they were supposed to do, then all kids will learn. And I find that insulting to teachers.
Can we go back? I'm going to cut you off. Can we go back and look at the Theory of Action?
Actually, actually...
It's like, you do these things, these four blue things, and then, look, we transform academic achievement, student behavior, and school culture.
So actually...
Spend, spend one day, spend one day in a first-grade classroom where 15 of the 16 kids in there had, and, and this is not a, this is not a classroom with, of IEP kids or special needs kids, your regular kids. I was shocked, completely shocked, at the needs of the kids in a quote-unquote "normal" classroom. If you have not been in a classroom since COVID, I urge you to go because everything has changed. Everything has changed. I mean, to ask children to sit down and, and get their worksheet and their, and their pencil, and to have one child throw the whole can of pencils everywhere, another child dive under their desk, another child needs their squishy thing, another child needs their, their vibrating seat to keep, to keep them normal. I mean, I was, I'm just telling you, if you have not been in a classroom since COVID, go get in one because this right here is, is, is not reality.
I, this, so this Theory of Action, by the way, I need to comment here because this is really important. There's not, that is the district accountability. So the board has said we need the, you all to be accountable. This Theory of Action says if "we," it doesn't say if you, the teacher, if "we," and then it says, and we engage, develop, and support our workforce. If we engage our workforce, if we support them, that's "we," and if we equitably implement process and allocate resources, that's district allocating resources and having process, processes that are equitable. And then at the end, and if we hold ourselves accountable. There has been a, a lack of accountability as far as we say we're going to do this, are we doing it? That has been our focus, and that's why those four things are the Theory of Action. Then we, as a system, will be able to transform because we are providing the resources, we are providing the support, and we are holding ourselves accountable to do what we say we're going to do. So I just, I wanted to say that that is not about the teachers.
It just feels to me like it's at the classroom level, and that very much concerns me.
Now, the walkthrough and implementation, that might be why you're feeling that. Because data from a walkthrough, you're going to gather data, but none of it has been back on punitive on teachers. They probably don't, haven't even seen, looked at that data because no one's coming and saying, this is what we gathered from your school. The principal does that. What I will say is, it's saying, are we doing what we're supposed to do? If we are saying we want to have rigor in every classroom, and we say we've done a training in every classroom, how do you find out if what we said we're going to do and what we offered is being done? You have to be in classrooms to see that. That doesn't mean that that's all on teachers. It's an assessment on ourselves, on support and what we're doing. So I, I'm very passionate about the fact that this is about district accountability. This whole plan is about us doing what we need to do for our people in the building, making sure they have resources and making sure they have what they need. This is not about, let's look at teachers and, and put all this on you. I mean, it is, that is not what this plan is about. So I hope you don't mind me. I wanted to comment because that is very important, that that is what the public message is, is that this is about our accountability. And so if it was about teachers, you would say, if teachers did blah, 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 and then if we held them accountable to doing blah, 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 that would be, that would be different. So I just, I want to make sure that is very clear. This is about us holding ourselves accountable because that has been feedback from the board for three years.
Vice Chair Bohannon?
Thank you, and thank you, Madam Superintendent. So, Ms. Hoskins, my question is around what you said about the creation of the Theory of Action being from central office. By central office, are you, i- is it, it was, was it, was it cabinet specifically? Like, who, who in central office developed the Theory of Action?
Yeah, it was, it was done in cabinet, yes.
So then to kind of connect the dots between that point and the superintendent's point, this was essentially a way for you all to kind of assess if, in the work that you all are responsible for, like, are you doing what it is that you all are setting out to do? And I know that that's kind of what you said. I just want to be clear about that.
Exactly. And let me just give an example. On the interventions, if you can see, we literally just had our two tier, three. That was a huge part of this year's work because we said it's not just about decreasing suspensions, it's about improving behavior. We talked about what improves behavior, making sure kids that need Tier Two interventions are getting them. So one of our main goals this year is actually implementing Tier Two interventions and making sure we're tracking those, and are we, are we training people to do those and are schools implementing, are schools doing that? So if we look at data and we see they're not doing it, we're not blaming schools. We're, we're looking back at what we did. Was the training adequate? Do people understand how to use the tool? So yes, all, all of this is about us holding ourselves as, as a central office body that's supposed to support our schools. That's the only reason we exist. Are we doing what we say we're going to do? So any of those numbers, if there's a low number, it's like, oh my gosh, what have we not provided in support or training? It is not, what are you not doing? And so I, I think that's very important in a change process. That is why the Theory of Action was developed centrally. It was like, what do we need to make sure we do to make sure schools have what they need?
So we're not using this theory of, this Theory of Action shouldn't be discussed in the kind of coaching conversations that principals are having with teachers in their evaluations?
No. This is not, this, this would not even be a Theory of Action for me to give you individual feedback. No.
Got it.
No, this is a systems-level Theory of Action.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Board Member Watts?
You mentioned the walkthrough. So at what point will the walkthroughs get to the level of the principal using the walkthrough, not as an evaluation tool, but as a support for that classroom teacher? Because, so, you know, several years ago, we know we had a walkthrough. It wasn't the best tool at all, but it was not used in evaluation, but it was used to start conversations about, quote, "deeper learning," students being on task, are you using open-ended questions, et cetera? So at what point do we move the tool from the system-level administration to building-level administration to really support that teacher in the classroom?
So it's my understanding, and Dr. Wilkins, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding that, that we are still, we are still calibrating at the central office level, and, and we are still tweaking the tool at the central office level. And so it would be almost irresponsible to try to get the principals to, to be using it at this point until, until, until the instructional leaders at the central office are, are final with, with what the document is. Is that close?
So it's a both and.
Okay.
So we are doing district calibration work, but schools also need to be accountable for what they're doing and supporting teachers. So we've created the District Walkthrough Tool with the goal that the district is collecting data, but also explaining to schools they have this tool available to use that to support their teachers and to engage in conversations, as you just mentioned. Because we can't do it alone, right? And so we're only sharing the district data because it goes back to the point of Superintendent McManus. We want to talk about what we're doing to make an impact, and if it's not making an impact, what does the district need to do to better to support schools? Is that clarified?
And I still feel like that can be done best by getting teacher input.
Absolutely.
About what they need.
And we, we do have several committees that we, we have teacher input. Like, our Deeper Learning Committee has several teachers that are part of it. We actually met this week, last week, actually, on last Thursday, and they gave us some input on some immediate actions that they wanted us to work towards, and we're responding to those. Thank you.
That's one of the reasons with the, we went to all 81 schools and met with up to 25 teachers per school around the code work. And the data we got is, is hugely important to the shifts we're going to make and bring back, but that's after we bring some of those teachers representing all those to the table with a team to see what do we need to do different. Now, we've heard you. You know, and the great thing about that data, if you looked at it, they felt that administrators are responsive. They just felt like there are repeat behaviors that, we're not saying they need out-of-school suspension, they're repeat behaviors that need something more. they're repeat behaviors that need something more. A lot of that is the tier-two interventions that the school leaders need to be, you know, need to be working through. So, we know there are areas, there are gaps still, and that's why it's so important that we keep gathering this data and keep making the changes of support, so.
Any other questions? Thank you. We are now going to move into the superintendent's update.
All right, I'm going to go. I know, I know we're past your time that you wanted us to get, to leave, so I'm going to go through this as quickly as possible. It really is just focused on weather. And so, I wanted to first and foremost, these are pictures from Saturday and Sunday from our maintenance team. They spent the entire weekend at schools, plowing, shoveling, all weekend to, to get us ready. And they've continued to do that. So, maintenance team, they are amazing, amazing. And they've, they've continued to do that. I wanted to show you where we are. I want the next slide, I want to show you where we are. So, basically, we've got, our calendar this year would have been 1,044 hours. The state requirement is 1,025. So, you can see, we had a little bit of a cushion in there. And so, what we ended up doing on September 27th and December 3rd, we were able to forgive those days because we did have that cushion. If you take all the days that we've had to miss and, and take out the, take out the two, we, we actually have about a thousand, a thousand hours. So, basically, in a nutshell, we would need to make up twenty-five, okay? To, to get right at that 1,025. Upcoming makeup days that were approved on December 10th were March 7th and April 21st. And so, that would be twelve hours. So, that leaves us with thirteen, all right? So, thirteen. And we'll talk about remote learning in a minute for any future weather events, but I wanted to show you this really quickly. That leaves us with thirteen hours that we would need to make up time for. So, there's two options, we can do that, and I'm not asking for you all to vote on this, I'm showing it to you. You could direct me to get more feedback on it. I mean, I was already planning on it, but you can, so I've, I've, I've put my own little feelers out with people in the audience and with principals and, but I said, "We could add fifteen minutes to each day." If we started on January 27th, that would be 1,031 hours. If we start on February 3rd, that would be 1,029. Both of those would work to be over the, over the hours. This does not include tomorrow morning, two hours. And if you think about it, although we're going to do remote from now on, and I'll show you that next slide, a two-hour delay does not, you can't, you don't do remote. So, like, tomorrow morning, we don't call remote for two hours and say, "Okay, everybody, remote for two hours, then you can come to school." It's one or the other. So, tomorrow morning, that's two hours. So, keep that in mind as we make the decision on what we want to do. The next makeup days, that would have to be, which, if you ask students and some, and teachers I've heard from, they're, these are not popular, is to come back May 21st, 22nd. These are all workdays. But the only other option for the thirteen hours would be to come back on the next days would be the 21st, 22nd. And so, basically, these are the options we have. We have the fifteen minutes added, or we've got, take additional workdays at, at the end of the year. Again, as I've put feelers out, people like, and I've just talked to some folks in the room, some teachers, and today, we met with principals to talk about remote plans. The feel was fifteen minutes seems better than bringing kids back at the end of the school year. And so, I, I am, we are more than happy to do some type of mass two-option survey. If you all want me to ask parents, kids, teachers, I mean, it, I can do that. It will take not long to send out something with two questions. Do you like this or this? And we could bring that feedback. Time is of the essence, so we would need to do this. Our next board meeting is what day? Twenty-eighth. So, basically, we would miss out on that January 27th, but we could do a very quick special call if y'all would be up for it to make a vote like that. Like, so it just, we need to make a decision. Next slide. So, here, here would be the impact. I thought you might ask that, because I would ask that. And so, here would be the impact right now. These are the times. And again, guys, there's a little caveat at the bottom that we have a lot of schedules on times. I've tried to change that for three years and have not been successful with that. But we, I just have to let you know that, we've got a lot of schedules. And so, with that, this is for, in a nutshell, this would be the extra time. So, if you saw that, it'd be added on, on the backend. I mean, you could split it up and add some on the front and some on the back. There, there are options. Going a little bit earlier, like middle school, even going earlier, that's, that seems a little problematic to me, but we have options here. At the end of the day, you can't say that extra fifteen minutes, you can just add more to lunch. As much as that would be amazing, we cannot do that. It has to be instructional, so you'd have to say, "We'll add some to each period." You could do, you could do on those, an MTSS, like, at the end of the day, like, period where you do tier-two interventions. Like, there's options. Fifteen minutes could go a long way, but that's, so that's showing you that. Last but not least, remote. I think this might, no, I'm sorry, yeah, remote. So, what we are doing the next three days, and teachers and, and staff have already been notified that any future weather days, we are going to go remote. I will say, the, the not going remote had nothing to do with, it was not a financial decision. The, the non-remote, we haven't done remote in three years, nor have we had to. We had that cushion built in, and so, we had, we did not really have the need to do that. It is not the optimal, the optimal choice for learning. I mean, obviously, because what, what's happening remote, if it can be asynchronous and you can still have live instruction going, we are no longer a one-to-one device system. Elementary do not have one-to-one, they are two-to-one. So, what you have to do is actually send home materials and things like that. And honestly, that, that's just not, that's not optimal for kids, but it is optimal for meeting a state requirement. So, it's more of a compliance-type of exercise. Now, I'm not saying in an asynchronous environment, for, for, in some cases, you know, we made that work back then, but to your point today, you know, we're still like recovering from that. But I will tell you, these few days, like, so if we, we're expecting weather next week, just know that on Friday, students are taking things home. Whether it's lessons in campus, every school's creating their, their plan. We're sending a message to parents tomorrow. In the event we have to call future days, we are going to do remote because we don't want to be coming back and forth to continue. We did do the snow day, so hopefully, everybody enjoyed that with Saturday. That doesn't really count. But people always said, "Don't call remote, give us a snow day if it snows." It snowed on Saturday, but people got that. But anyway, so we are going, we have no choice, honestly, at this point, but to go to the remote, the remote option. So, you can see, I already mentioned about a two-hour delay, and the last, was that the last slide? No, feeding. I want to do one more slide. So, the state, the, the federal government has very specific guidelines around feeding. And so, I asked Lauren, we, we talked about it in our weather team, and we said, "We want, we want to be able to feed students." Because this last event, it was Friday, Monday, and Tuesday, that students, there may have been food insecurities with some of our students and some of our students' homes, and we, we really want to be able to continue to provide meals. So, basically, in a remote instruction day, you can provide funding, you can provide meals, but the craziest part of that guideline is, if you come to get that meal, you have to, you're supposed to eat in the cafeteria. You, you're supposed to eat there. I, don't ask me why, I don't create these rules, but I'm just sharing them. If you close school, you can lose, use local funding only, and students can take meals away. So, what I'm saying is, in the future, I would want to be able to, and this is what it would cost, if we'd open ten sites, if, for a closure, we could do the, Lauren, really quickly, if we did remote, could we use the same option as closure? If we use local funds, could we just do pick-up and take-home? Yeah. So, if we use local funds, we could just have meals, kids could come get them and take them home, breakfast and lunch. What that would cost, if we did twenty-five to seventy meals per day at ten sites, it would cost between 7,500 and 15,000. So, I would just ask, like, in the future, whether it be remote or, or, or closed, which won't be closed the rest of this year, it'll be remote, would the board, you know, would, would I have the opportunity to use local funds if Tommy says we can, to actually provide meals? So, that, I'm just going to open up now, those, yes?
My question is, oh, it went away. The seventy-five meals, that doesn't seem like a lot. But if we're talking about breakfast and lunch, so that reduces it down to like thirty-six.
Okay, Lauren, is it breakfast and lunch, or did I misspeak there? Oh, it's just lunch, I'm sorry. It's just lunch. And I. Yeah.
Okay.
There are a few doing this, and so, Lauren got some data, and that's what they're seeing. Again, a lot of this is, can, access is probably an issue as well. Like, can I get to that site?
Can you walk there or whatever?
In the weather. So, I mean, there, there's other options that we can talk through, but I just, I wanted you to see that.
Okay.
I mean, if it's more than one day, I think that we should attempt to do something. I don't, you know, during the pandemic, we did all kinds of things. I mean, with local dollars, you have flexibility. You could do delivery, you could use, you could do other things. We haven't talked about it in that, I'm just talking out loud, but we could find other options.
The other concern I had, and this is for remote learning and sending the packets home, I want to make sure that principals understand that paper is available. Because I know when I taught, it was always an issue that we only have, you only get two packs per whatever, and so, you've already used your limit. We need to make sure they understand that we're going to provide paper, so they're going to make packets.
We told principals today, and where's Tommy? He was, is he already gone? Oh, there you are. I was hoping you were already gone, but I was, because I was going to say, no. I'm just kidding. But I told, I'm just kidding, Tommy. But I did tell, I did tell principals today that we would provide additional paper and additional toner for their printers because they need to be able to print these, this stuff at school. Are you good with that? Since I put you on the spot, okay.
The other thing, too, is with the backpack program, we, the more notice we can give them, sometimes those volunteers can get over to the schools and get those packets of food delivered to kids to take home. But if, if we don't, if we don't know soon enough, then we.
So, the backpack, the Friday-go-home program?
Right. Like, if we had known we were going to be closed.
Yes.
On a Friday, there's volunteers who are willing to go over there on Thursday and get all the food.
Grab it and then deliver it.
Distributed, right.
Okay, that's another great strategy. So, does anybody have questions about the, the adding of time, anything on this? Or feedback before we?
Well, I, my feedback would be, just go ahead and do it. We don't, I don't think we need to survey, just go ahead and use your discretion and make the decision, January or February, so we can get it in place as quickly as possible.
And I recommend we do five minutes earlier and ten minutes later to make up the fifteen minutes.
So, good recommendation.
I like that. I agree. Just a kind of a thinking out loud, does this, I know we have to vote on remediation and all that fun stuff, but if it were approved, how does that factor into all of this?
Are you talking about the, are you talking about?
End of year.
End of year testing? So, I know Andy will be bringing back, that back soon, very soon as well. So, right now, if we do the time, add the time, we will not need to use any of those days. So, the end of the year, we've already built in, what is it, four days or, or three days that week, and then two the next week? We've built in the days. So, if we do extra time, our end-of-year teachers will have those three workdays, and then we go into testing, and days have been added for that as well, already.
And this would be fifteen minutes added from now, well, from the day it starts to the.
To the last day of school, yes. Including the remote days. I mean, I know that sounds crazy, but you need to say you have that much more time added on those days as well, if we have to do any.
Sorry, I just had a question, and this is just, in, in some of the recommendations, like, some of the recommendations for the shifts in the bell schedule, wasn't the variance about fifteen minutes?
Yes. Some were ten, if there were differences, but some were, might have been ten minutes, some not at all, no minute. Because high schools are already longer than all the other levels, but yeah, it was about fifteen.
All right, thank you.
But there are some that were more than thirty minutes, even upwards to forty-five. It was a big shift, and those were the ones we heard from. How does all this affect the teacher workdays? Because given that, like, with the remote learning, like, a lot of teachers have been working on these snow days. Are they, how do they get, you know, do they still have to make up workdays, or how does that work?
Chris, do you want to address that in the middle? Okay.
The teachers are under 215-day contracts. So, basically, from the day we start on August 1st until our last day, we have to account for each. So, basically, we swap them out. So, the, if it's our day, if we, we have a student day that we make our day, we let them remote work, and then we end up making school on our day. Making school, for example, the next two that are coming out the board approve last meeting. If we approve what the superintendent's recommending here, it's still the 215 the teachers just to keep to our day. So, instead of having 173 instructional days, they're going to teach 171 and maybe have 21 our days rather than nineteen. Don't quote me on that exact number, just for example purposes. So, it doesn't affect them. It will impact our teacher assistance because we have not had them working once we exhausted the inclement weather days. So, they'll end up working two more our days at the end of the school year. So, they'll work that Friday and Tuesday after moral day on their terms. It just changes what days they work on the terms of appointment.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to our action items. First, consider approval of the 2024-2025 early-middle-college calendar reconciliation. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Second?
So, I have a motion by Board Member Kuhn, a second by Board Member Brown Gaither. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Next, consider approval of the surplus of property on Nicholson and Terry Road. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second? So, I have a motion by Board Member Crowley, a second by Board Member Kuhn. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, motion passes unanimously. Next, consider approval of the use of the Wiley Middle School 2016 bond funds to support completion of the Wiley Reynolds Stadium project. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
So, I have a motion by Board Member Miller, a second by Board Member Crowley. Any discussion?
I'd just like some clarification on this.
And I was going to as well, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Daryl, did you want to come to the middle? I, I can, I will start while he's walking. Yes, so this, I know in the original title that was posted, that was, that title was not correct, and I, I completely missed it because what the funds from the Wiley project are going to are parts of this project that we actually were supposed to do, that actually were, cost more, and to finish the parts that we had committed, committed to. So, Daryl, I don't know if you want to give more information on that?
Yeah, you're being kind, I own that.
No, 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 no.
I own the title. And I'll tell you how that happened, is like, you know, the plans have always been laid out in a phased approach. And in Phase Three, when staff always meets with home field advantage, and then within termally, we always call Phase Three, the Hall of Champions, and press box. It's all one project in our mind, and I put it on paper as one project. So, I apologize for that, that, that was on me. It is, it, our, our work here is going towards the press box, some electrical work in the press box, connecting some electrical from the stadium lights into the concession stand where the meter box is, and completion of a one-section of the emergency fire road.
And, and just, these were, this was the scope of work already that we had agreed on as a board? This was the scope of work that we had already agreed on as a board?
Yes.
To complete?
Okay. Am I good?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Board Member Kuhn.
I'm understanding, you're saying that it's within the scope of work. So, we approved dollars last year to finish our portion of the scope of work, like, the lighting, all those things. We said, "We're going to give this much more money, and it's going to cover the rest of our portion." So, now, we're needing more money to cover the rest of our portion. Is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, a lot, a lot, for example, like the lights, for example, what you allotted the first time, paid for the lights and the poles. There was not money in there to pull the wire from the light from the poles into the concession stand where the meter box is. And so, we, we need to take that work home. It makes sense to do that while electrician's on site. So, you had some, a little bit of additional cost there on that, outside of what you originally approved.
Why was that not done to begin with? Like, I feel like we, I know at this point, it's, we got to do so that we can get done, but I feel like we have continually had problems with estimates and/or things being left off. And then, we come back and end up having to use more money when we have other projects that need this money, too.
Yeah, I, I think I, you know, the, the answer to that really is around the phased approach. So, the pulling of that wire was not in the phased work that we were planning on doing, that you allotted money towards in December 2023. That was in the home field advantage scope as related to when they built the concession stand because the box was going to be there to connect to. It made all the sense in a world while the electrician was there to go ahead and pull that wire and not pay, somebody have to pay an outfit charge for them to come back. So, we went ahead and pulled that wire and just stubbed it up in the ground. And while they're building a concession stand now, when they put that panel box up, what we hope within the next two weeks, we've got to connect that to that box.
I appreciate that, and I'm not saying it's not warranted. I'm not, I, I think my issue is, are we going to come back again? Because we were told this was going to be the last ask, and we gave it. Now, we're asking again, like, how many ti, like?
Yeah, we're.
I think that's my issue, is that we keep saying it's the end, and then it's not the end. the end.
And I think the, the reason we came back, the, if we had not, this would be a different conversation, even though we need to finish the things we started. If we didn't have 200,000 left in Wiley's project, so this is serving, like, the stadium is serving Wiley and Reynolds. And so had that not been there, this might be a very different conversation because we'd have to figure out a funding source. And so the reason we were like, no, let's bring this, let's finish these parts of this project, is because the money's sitting in there. As you all, as you all know, we swept pretty much any other leftover money anywhere else into other projects. We left that there, just in case. And this is the, the just in case, because the stadium is going to serve both, both schools.
And, and to kind of answer your question, we're at the end of the road here. We're at the end of the project, which is a great thing for us all. So, you know, we anticipate the stadium, hopefully, a part of this emergency road piece that we want, has to happen to get the certificate of occupancy to open that up. So we're at the end of the road. We hope to have this stadium kind of open February 1st of March is kind of the goal at this point.
And at the time, we did approve them, those funds, the estimates given for the work were all very neatly rounded numbers, which means they weren't hard bids. So as we know with construction, in the past couple of years, everything has gone up, just like it went up on our other projects. It has gone up on this project as well. But, you know, we, we approved a, a scope and then a number that didn't have estimates on it. It had guestimates on it at best. And this has happened twice since I've been on the board, but only with the Reynolds project.
So the only, the only question I have, Daryl, is I would like to see, once everything is completed, I'd like to see the total amount that was spent on the project, our dollars and Home Field Advantage's dollars. And I'd also like to see kind of a delineation of, like, officially what it is that we paid for versus what it is that they paid for. I think the public ought to also see that. So if, 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 I think probably the best way to do that would be, maybe we put it on some agenda so that we can just kind of, like, look at that, talk through that, so that the public can have access to that.
We have, we have a spreadsheet, run a spreadsheet with all that information updated.
Okay.
I'd say, let's just wait till March, the project's completely done, and we know every, all the, everything's paid out. But I would say March would be a good timeline for that.
Sounds like a plan. Thank you.
And it'd be a great time to thank all the private donors.
Absolutely. Yeah.
So we have a motion. We have a second. We've had discussion. All in favor. So, one, two. Okay. Opposed? So motion passes, eight to one. Next, consider approval of the MOA with Innovation Project and approval of appropriation of grant funding. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Vice Chair Bohannon, a second by Board Member Watts. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Next, consider approval of the appropriation of funds for the America 250 Grant Brief to the September 24th, 2024 Curriculum Committee. Do I have a motion?
As a social studies teacher, I'd gladly say move on that one.
Okay. So I have a motion by Board Member Watts, a second by Board Member Coon. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. We will move on to our consent agenda. We have one item, consider approval of the general personnel report. Do I have a motion? Second. So I have a motion by Vice Chair Bohannon, a second by Board Member Crowley. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Our next meeting of the Board of Education will be on January 28th, and we will open up our meeting to the public. We need to be brief again because we are way past our time with ICE. So I will allow for two minutes for the comment. First up is Allen Daniel.
Good evening again. I'd like to first thank Mr. Watts for his call.